Good evening, everyone. We're going to go ahead and call our board meeting to the session right now. So I'd just like to say hello to everyone and Happy New Year. I know it sounds kind of late to say Happy New Year, but it's our first time meeting as a board this new year. And so, super excited about that. And we'll go ahead and move forward with the agenda. And we'll start off with the Pledge of Allegiance. And who do we have today for the Pledge of Allegiance? All right, I've got to put my glasses on, I might help. It is Ms. Camargo's 3rd grade class at Kimbark Elementary. So thank you, Ms. Camargo and your class.
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the visible and in the earthly justice for all.
All right, thank you very much to Ms. Camargo's 3rd grade class at Kimbark Elementary. Job well done. We're going to take a look now at the approval agenda. I know there's some items on there that needed to be moved, so... Do you want me to go ahead and announce that one? All right, we're going to move on item 10.2, which is a resolution on COVID, up to 2.3 with the rest of the resolutions. So we're going to move that. And then 2.3 will move down to 2.6.
The move.
All right, thank you, Mr. Tillman, and thank you, Dr. Flores. Dr. Flores, do you have a discussion item on that?
Not on this item.
Okay.
But later on, on consent. We don't pull them until we get to consent, right?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, let's go ahead and vote on the amendment to the agenda. All right, looks like motion carries. We'll move on to 1.4, and that is inspirational message. And that actually is going to be by me. And, you know, first of all, I just want to start off by saying I appreciate everybody here. And a couple items here. Obviously, we want to honor our friend and colleague and family member and just outstanding community member, Dr. Margaret Hill. And, you know, I want to start off with a quote. And obviously, yesterday was Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day. And, you know, he has a famous quote, but I'm going to put a little twist on it because obviously, he says, "We must learn to live together as brothers," and I want to put "and sisters," "or perish together as fools." And, you know, I think right now in this time in history, it's just, we're so divided. But the one thing that Dr. Hill was able to do was to bring us together. And that was one of her greatest gifts is by bringing our community together to accomplish amazing things for this community, for our children. And so, I don't think there's any greater honor than to honor her right now with a video that we've put together. And then after that, I'd like to ask for a moment of silence once the video is done. So let's go ahead and cue up that video. Thank you.
My name is Dr. Margaret Hill, and I am a member of the Board of Education of this wonderful district, San Bernardino City Unified. But I used to tell my students, if you don't like what's going on, do something about it. So I ran for office. And I have enjoyed working with the students, the parents, the staff members. We do not have any doorway students. Every student is valuable. Every student is important, and every student is capable. We just want them all to reach their capabilities. We are not satisfied with 93% graduation rate. We're looking for 100%. Take a look and say, what can I do to make a difference in someone's life? To me, that's the most important thing that you can do to fulfill your own soul. I don't see myself as a leader. I see myself as someone who loves my city, who loves my people, who loves all people. But I tell you, I feel sorry for the rest of you because I was at the best school today. When I stand before God at the end of my life, I would hope that I would not have a single bit of talent left and can say, "I used everything you gave me."
Well, I think we'd all agree that Dr. Hill gave not only 100%, but 150%. And, you know, sitting there, I love my city, I love my people, I love all people. And, you know, to our board, I just want you and our community here to know that I love you all. You know, and I think that we have to continue her legacy by loving one another, loving what we do here for our kids, loving our community, and loving our city. So let's keep that in mind as we move forward as a board, and we support our superintendent and his mission to make great things and make hope happen for this district. So I'll ask for a moment of silence right now. All right, we'll move on to 2.1, which is a resolution in support of Dr. Margaret Hill Day. And that honor will go to Dr. Gwen Doughty Rogers. Dr. Rogers.
Thank you, President Wyatt. Whereas Dr. Margaret Finam Hill was born on December 17, 1940, in Virginia; and whereas Dr. Hill grew to love education, earning a bachelor's degree from Norfolk State University, a master's degree in educational administration from Cal State San Bernardino, and a doctorate from the University of Redlands; and whereas Dr. Hill began her educational career as a teacher at San Bernardino High School in 1971, and later became a vice principal and principal, spending the last 16 years before her retirement from San Bernardino City Unified School District and as the principal of San Andreas High School; and whereas after her retirement, Dr. Hill returned to work at the San Bernardino County Superintendent of Schools Office in 2006 and as an assistant superintendent until her second retirement in 2012; and whereas Dr. Hill was the author of two books, "It's About the Children" and "From Sharecropping to Non-Stopping: Reflections of Life from a Veteran Educated." And whereas throughout her life, Dr. Hill served on a number of nonprofit, community-based clubs and organizations, including the Kiwanis of Greater San Bernardino, Highland Women's Club, Time for Change Foundation, Highland Family YMCA, San Bernardino Black Culture Foundation, the Mom Mob, the National Sorority of Phi Delta Kappa Incorporated, and many others. And whereas Dr. Hill's work has been honored and recognized over the years with the San Bernardino County School Board Association's Distinguished Service Award, the Order of the Eastern Stars Community Service Award, the Boys and Girls Club of San Bernardino Appreciation Award, the Faith Temple Ministry Educator of the Year Award, and the Association of California School Administrators Valuing Diversity Award, a Lifetime Achievement Award from the San Bernardino County Gangs and Drugs Task Force, and the recently presented Catalyst in Education Award from the San Bernardino Cal State University College of Education, among many others. And whereas in 2002, Dr. Hill helped establish a school-operated restaurant on the campus of San Andreas High School for students to learn business and culinary skills, which was named Maggie's Kitchen, Maggie's Cafe. In her honor, and when that restaurant closed, Maggie's Cafe was rededicated at the San Bernardino City Unified School District Professional Development Center. And whereas the San Bernardino City Unified School District honored Dr. Hill in 2019 in naming the remodeled boardroom, the Dr. Hill Community Room; and whereas Dr. Hill passed away on December 19, 2021, a few days after her 81st birthday, bringing great sorrow to her family, friends, and the many lives she touched throughout her educational career. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of San Bernardino City Unified School District does hereby recognize January 22, 2022, as Dr. Hill Day and encourages all schools to participate in remembrance of activities.
Move.
All right, it's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion? Okay, we'll go ahead and vote. All righty, it's been approved, and thank you, Dr. Rogers. I really do appreciate that.
President Wyatt, I just want to explain the light. Do you want to? There's a light in her chair.
Ginger will. Ginger, okay, Ginger.
Do it after the presentation.
After the presentation? Okay, all right, very good. And so, we'll move forward to 2.2, Special Recognition Check Presentation from AMLC to the Making Hope Happen Foundation, establishing the Dr. Margaret Hill Memorial Scholarship Endowment. So I'd like to invite those folks up here along with Ms. Nikki Detman, as well as family members of Dr. Margaret Hill. Please, if you could, come forward as well for the recognition and presentation to check.
Thank you, Dr. Wyatt. When I think of Dr. Margaret Hill, I think of Yamaya, the Arubin goddess. Yamaya was the mother of all water, the divine earth mother, a protector. Dr. Hill was my Yamaya. She flowed into our school district in 1970 and continually flooded our community with love, forever changing the landscape. In a city experiencing poverty and decline, she had a way of making everyone she talked to feel like she mattered because to her, they did. Her commitment to the city, city's children and youth, was unwavering. She started as a teacher in the district. And in the last 16 years of her tenure, she was the principal at San Andreas High School. She was a hero. An exceptional emotional intelligence was her superpower. But make no mistake, her empathy was not an acceptance of mediocrity. She wanted the best for and from her students and the community. And even as she sat on the dais at her final school board meeting in this very room named after her, she demanded it. The great Shirley Chisholm said, "You don't make progress by standing on sidelines, whimpering, and complaining. You make progress by implementing ideas." Even in retirement, Dr. Hill refused to stand on the sidelines. Working first for the county superintendent of schools and then joining the San Bernardino City Unified Board of Education as a trustee, she was part of a district turnaround that earned national attention and recognition. But for me, a personal highlight of her career was seeing Dr. Hill hand my son his high school diploma and hug him as he walked across the stage. The lives of my children and I have been enriched because she blessed and allowed us to be a part of hers. Margaret Hill was the heart of this board, the soul of this district, and the mother of our community. She was our Yamaya. And when her floodwaters ultimately receded, she left us better people, a better organization, a better community. There are few people in this community who cannot tell you a story about how she touched their lives. And that will be clearly evidenced at her upcoming memorial service on Saturday at San Manuel Stadium. It is with this spirit that I, on behalf of the Making Hope Happen Foundation, that I very gratefully accept a generous donation from AMLC to start the Dr. Margaret Hill Memorial Scholarship, which will provide at least one mentor-supported scholarship each year to a graduate at the school she loved so much, San Andreas High School, in perpetuity. And when I say at least one, it's because you better believe that the Making Hope Happen Foundation has every intention of growing that endowment so that we can honor Dr. Hill, so we can recognize those students who often get forgotten at San Andreas. It is what she wanted, and it is the honor that she deserves. All of this is in thanks to a generous sponsor, AMLCC, which is a mission-critical partner of the district and is America's leading provider of K-12 and community health solutions for COVID-19 mitigation. And they are here with the founding gift for the Dr. Margaret Hill Memorial Scholarship, a gift of $75,000. At this time, I would like to recognize Dr. Hill's brother, Raymond Finam, and give him my personal sincere condolences because I miss that woman every day. I'd like to now introduce Godwin Orky and Erin Thames from AMLCC.
First of all, good evening, everyone, and thank you for the true privilege and honor of being able to support this cause. I am so sorry for your loss. I grew up outside of Chicago in a demographic and a city that looked a lot like San Bernardino. And when I was a little kid, I used to wait for the bus. And I, if you remember those "Have You Seen Me?" cards, I used to hold them with me every day, waiting for the bus to come pick me up because all I've ever wanted to do with my life is help. So when Ginger reached out and said, "I need your help," I was so honored to be in a position where I could say, "Yes, what do you need?" And I have built AMLC over the last couple of years on that premise. How do we help? What do you need? What is the solution? So I am very honored, although I never met Dr. Margaret Hill. I feel she would have been one of my best friends if I had met her in this life because I feel her motto was also, "How do I help? What do you need? What is the solution?" And so, while we know this is not the permanent solution that you need, we at AMLC truly do hope that this starting gift for your endowment of $75,000 to support your community will help those in need and those who are in need of that scholarship endowment.
And some folks were actually asking, who is AMLC? And so, we know that's Applied Metrics, and they work with us on our COVID liaisons throughout our schools and during the pandemic. So we wanted to make sure that, you know, folks know who they were because I know it was just a couple of initials there. But we definitely want to give a tremendous thank you to them, and we appreciate them starting off this amazing scholarship fund for Dr. Hill. And Ms. Ontiveros, you were going to explain a little bit about our light recognition as well.
Yes, and I'd like to add my thanks to AMLC. As Ms. Thames indicated, they have been very responsive. Every time we said we needed help, they were right there. So I knew when we needed to make this happen quickly in order to honor our colleague and friend, Dr. Hill, that they would be right there to say yes. So I wanted to also add my thanks to AMLC, who does provide the COVID liaisons in all of our schools, helping to make sure that we're keeping our students and our staff safe throughout the district and helping us to manage this pandemic while we get to focus on education, right, in our classrooms. We felt it was fitting tonight to make sure that we honored the space that was left here in our boardroom by Dr. Hill. And tonight, so we felt that it was befitting to use a light to do that because she was such a light for all of us. And it's purple because purple is her favorite color. So we felt if she was going to be a light, she would be here in this color. And I want to thank our team for helping to make this tribute happen for her. And so, we'll keep that light shining tonight as a remembrance of the power that she brought to our boards. So thank you so much.
Thank you again, Ms. Ontiveros. We do appreciate that. All right, we're going to move on now to 2.3, which was 10.2. And we're going to have Mr. Vice President Danny Tillman read the resolution for 10.2.
Thank you, President Wyatt. Whereas San Bernardino City Unified School District is committed to safeguarding the educational, health, and safety needs of students and the community within its geographic boundaries. And whereas on October 1, 2021, Governor Gavin Newsom directed the California Department of Public Education to require all California K-12 students to receive a COVID-19 vaccine to attend school following full approval by the Federal Food and Drug Administration of a COVID-19 vaccine for students in the following grade spans, kindergarten through 6th grade and 7th grade through 12th grade. And whereas San Bernardino City and Fight School District, a state model for COVID-19 mitigation efforts, has implemented a high standard of multi-layered safety measures, including COVID-19 testing in schools, required indoor masking, hospital-grade ventilation, home health screening, high-quality sanitation measures, and actively managing the requirement for all employees to be vaccinated or test weekly to mitigate the spread of COVID-19 in the school community. And whereas San Bernardino City and Fight School District believes that the parental choice in COVID-19 vaccination is important, and families must be given the greatest flexibility possible to exercise their freedom of choice, and those who wish to have their children vaccinated should have access to vaccines, while those who do not wish to vaccinate their children against COVID-19 should have the personal freedom to request and be granted an exemption. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of the San Bernardino City and Fight School District does hereby ask the state of California and its lawmakers for flexibility for families to make this important decision based on their unique circumstances. And hereby ask that the state support the rights of families and students when it comes to medical, religious, and personal belief exemptions and should allow exemptions to the vaccine for those who are unable to or choose not to receive the COVID-19 vaccine. So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion? All right, resolution has carried. We'll move on to 2.4, Resolution in Support of AB 75, Kindergarten Community Colleges Public Education Facilities Bond Act of 2022. And that will be Ms. Sabios, please.
Whereas the San Bernardino City Unified School District is committed to providing a quality education to our students and preparing them to succeed in today's global economy; and whereas safe, welcoming, and modern classrooms offer the learning opportunities required for a high-quality 21st century education; and whereas the district has over $300 million in facility needs which are eligible to be partially matched by state school facility funds; and whereas the state of California has committed funds from all previous bond measures and is facing an increasing backlog of unfunded needs, currently at over $3 billion; and whereas Assembly Bill 75, as currently written, authorizes the kindergarten community colleges public education facilities... authorizes the Kindergarten Community Colleges Public Education Facilities Bond Act of 2022, providing funding for renovation and improvements of existing classrooms, construction of new classrooms and school facilities, upgrades for HVAC and clean air filters. And whereas new bonds, new bond funds will expand career technical education facilities to improve job and career training, provide funds to meet new needs related to COVID-19. And whereas replacing, upgrading, and/or building new classrooms and facilities is expensive and the district has several projects on the current waitlist that are eligible for approximately $50 million in state matching funds if voters approve AB 75. And whereas Assembly Bill 75, the Bond Act of 2022, will not raise individual local property taxes while at the same time ensuring the state funds its share of local school facilities. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of the San Bernardino City Unified School District supports Assembly Bill 75, the Kindergarten Community Colleges Public Education Facilities Bond Act of 2022 in its current form as drafted and published on May 24th, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion? All right, we'll go ahead and vote. All righty, resolution carries. We'll move on to 2.5, Resolution in Recognition of African American Month. Dr. Flores.
Whereas the History of African American History Month, also known as Black History Month, traces back to 1915 when the father of Black History Month, Dr. Carter G. Woodson, founded the Association for the Study of the Negro Life and History, now known as the Association for the Study of African American Life and History. And whereas Dr. Woodson established the Celebration of Negro History Week, which was celebrated for the first time during the second week of February 1926 to correspond with the birthdays of Frederick Douglass and Abraham Lincoln, both men who were great American symbols of freedom. And whereas in 1976, President Gerald Ford issued the First Black History Month Proclamation, calling upon the Americans to celebrate this observance each February. And whereas African American History Month recognizes the significant contributions of African Americans throughout our nation's history through their contributions in the arts, entertainment, law, politics, sciences, sports, and so much more. Whereas the San Bernardino City Unified School District Board of Education recognizes the importance of learning the history and achievements of African Americans, not only during African American History Month, but throughout the whole year. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of the San Bernardino City Unified School District declares the month of February 2022 National African American History Month and encourages educators, students, and families to learn about the heritage and achievements of African Americans through appropriate programs and activities.
Moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion? All right, let's go ahead and vote. And motion carries. We'll move on to 2.6. Parent Advisors 2020 through 2021 School Year Annual Reports. Ms. Applegate.
Yes, thank you. And I want to say again, what a wonderful tribute to Dr. Hill. And if there's one thing that Dr. Hill loved, it was our parents and our community. So I'd like to, I'm honored to now introduce our parent advisory committees, who will be providing their yearly annual report to the board as the state requires. Our first one that we are going to be showcasing is our Community Advisory Committee, our CAC. So if we can please have a representative to provide the report.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, Board President Dr. Wyatt, Board Vice President Mr. Tillman, Superintendent Irvin, and Cabinet members. My name is Lalia Boites, and I am the Community Advisory Council CAC President, the proud president, and I will be giving the annual report. The CAC is the advisory board to our district's Special Education Department and the Special Education Local Plan Area, the SELPA. The CAC is mostly made out of parents of students receiving special education services. Other CAC members may include teachers, school district personnel, community agency representatives, and other community members concerned with the needs of individuals with disabilities. We have three parent CAC members, officers, I'm sorry. Myself, Mrs. Amada Fitzpatrick, our vice chairperson, and Mrs. Maria Luisa Ramirez, our secretary. We currently have four officers, 45 voting members, and there are five meetings scheduled this school year. This school year, CAC parent meeting topics have included the differences between 504 plans versus the IEPs, the Individualized Education Plans. We did an overview of the Administrative Dispute Resolution process, the ADR. Introductions were made of all our special education point of contacts for our district schools. And the LCAP has been presented, how local funds are used to support our special needs students. One of the CAC highlights this school year has been the First Annual College and Career Fair that took place on October 14th for our district's special education students and the parents. FAFSA was overviewed. San Bernardino Valley College spoke about the programs and services for special needs students. UCLA, Cal State San Bernardino, and Fresno State presented services available for transitioning into the college life. And the California Department of Rehabilitation shared their career opportunities for special needs students. So we invite the community to join us for our upcoming meetings, CAC parent meetings, for on February 17th and April 21. Topics will include educationally-related behavioral supports available to our special needs students and English language supports for special education students, respectively. And thank you, and a special thank you to Dr. Hill for her loving example for all and how to fight for the best education for our students. And condolences to her family and friends. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wyatt. And great job with the CAC as well. I've seen us come a long way with that CAC and wow, great job to you and our special ed department and staff. Ms. Rosada Medina?
I'm really excited that we have these presentations, and so thank you so much for presenting. I wanted to find out, the last, one of the last slides that mentioned the upcoming meetings, are these, how many meetings is it a year then? And has the group discussed maybe having more meetings within a year? Because I know there's one in February, there's one in April. So it's every two months, it seems like they're going to have one.
Okay, I'm sorry, maybe I missed a slide. Did I miss a slide where?
That one right there. So no, no, I saw those dates, but I'm just curious. That it skips March, so I'm just curious, maybe it's every other month that they'll be having a meeting?
Well, we're obligated to have certain number of CAC meetings, but under the special education umbrella, we have workshops throughout.
Okay.
So, CAC, yeah, so we're mandated to have certain amounts, right? Or certain meetings for certain stuff, the SELPA, LCAP, so forth. But we have workshops, like the, I forget which ones we've had, but yeah. We have workshops throughout. We get input from our members for, and they tell us, oh, we would like to see this. Like the 504 versus the IEP. That was a request from a member. So we work them in, and if we don't have time during the CAC, then we make a workshop out of it.
Okay, that makes sense. No, thank you, and I'm glad that they're having more meetings than just what the bare minimum is.
Oh, no, yes.
Yeah, definitely helps with parents. Thank you, for sure.
You're welcome.
And we had one more question from Dr. Flores.
Thank you for your report. It was very good. I'm so happy that our parents are meeting regularly and voicing their concerns and also learning. So my question follows up with Ms. Medina in terms of topics and concerns. Do you survey the parents? Do they, is it all the parents, or it's just parents attending the meeting? How do you, how does the group address the needs of other families and parents that aren't attending the meeting?
So the Special Education Department invites all the communities. So it goes out via our district, what is it, Parents Square? And so everyone is invited. In the beginning of the school year, everybody's able to become a voting member. And then in the beginning of the school year, I do remember that they sent out a survey of what would you like to see during the school year, be addressed during the CAC. So they do survey it. And then also our parents are vocal and they let us know what they would like to see in the meetings.
Do you feel that your advocacy is helping and supporting our students with special needs?
Absolutely, yes. Yes, we have a great group of parents who are vocal, who are caring, who are, they want the best for the whole community.
That's good to hear, because as a board, we need to know if we are addressing your needs and, you know, and also, most importantly, our students' needs.
Of course. And you're all welcome to attend the next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
All righty, thank you again. And I believe we'll be moving on to the district advisory council.
Thank you, and I believe that they are virtual. So they will be presenting our DAC council.
Hello, good evening.
Evening.
I'm here. President, Board President, Mr. Wyatt, Dr. Wyatt, I apologize, and Vice President Danny Tillman, and our esteemed Superintendent, Mr. Irving. Thank you guys all for having me here. And I'd like to also thank the whole board and my condolences to Dr. Hill's family. And this is a hard act to follow, but we have to keep moving on like she would want. So, good evening. My name is Corinthea Williams. I am the District Advisory Council co-chair. Tonight, I would like to share the purpose of DAC. The District Advisory Council is a committee of parents, students, and community representatives, teachers, principals, and other district staff. The formation of DAC is required by state law. Specific functions of DAC include providing reviews and comments on the district educational programs, district local control and accountability plan, including the local educational agency plan, the district parent and family engagement policy, and the consolidated application for state and federal categorical programs. Our mission with DAC is to promote excellence in education for all, let me say, all students through broad-based community representation. The DAC provides valuable input to the Educational Services Division and the Governing Board. All parents, staff, community members are encouraged to attend DAC meetings. Our upcoming meetings are held virtually via Zoom from 5:30 PM to 7:00 PM. Meeting dates include January 20th, February 10th, March 10th, April 14th, and May 12th. Please call 909-473-2064 to register for meetings. The topics will include social, emotional, and mental health training, special education programs overview, LCAP supplemental feedback sessions, SPSA and budget development process, CAPS and extended learning, equity and targeted student achievement, Title I and Title IV monitoring, anti-bullying, career pathways, and college and career readiness, LCAP annual update feedback, and the California School Dashboard. Thank you for your time. Thank you for having us. Join us for our meetings. And as you guys can see, we do many things to help out and to make sure that things are going well for everyone. Thank you all.
Oh, thank you. Appreciate that. I think a number of us up here on the dais were on the DAC many years ago. Actually, I know quite a few of us. So we appreciate the work that's being done on all these committees. All righty.
I just had my lights on.
Ooh, my apologies.
No worries. It was just a quick one, if Karen can get us that calendar, because I know we haven't been attending that one, and that's probably why. I don't know the dates. I got off track after we were not, you know, coming in person. So if you can get those out to us, so we can support them just as we do the other groups. Thanks.
Absolutely, thank you, Dr. Rogers. All righty, next one, Ms. Applegate.
Yes, and so our next parent advisory council is our D-triple-A-C, or our District African American Advisory Committee. So if we have a representative?
Good evening, everyone. Mr. David, if you could be so kind to throw up our slides, please. That'd be great. And while we wait for the slides to come up, just one, on behalf of myself, the DAC president, the District African American Advisory Council president, our Vice President Mia Cooper, our Secretary Rashana Benjamin, we just want to thank the board and the superintendent for giving us a few moments to share with you all this evening. And I am going to also pull up slides because I can't see it on the Zoom. So give me one second.
And Ms. Robinson, I do have your presentation up right now.
Okay, thank you. All right. And so just wanted to take a moment to thank you all for allowing DAC to share a bit and wanted to start by kind of re-centering us around some focused areas that we had decided to work from prior to COVID. So if you could share the next slide, David. Thank you. And so here are two of the areas, parent and family development. Build parent awareness and knowledge on key topics in education from a parent-family perspective. Another focus area is student development. Increase students' self-efficacy and resiliency in students through programs, presentations, mentorship, and progress monitoring. The next slide, please. We have advocacy. Advocate for picking enrollment across all accelerated programs and opportunities. And then the final focus area, performance management. The district will provide reports quarterly and/or even more frequently to better inform and increase parent awareness of academic performance and behavioral outcomes of African-American students in these following areas, reading mass suspension and expulsion, DF reports quarterly, attendance, and A through G completion. Next slide, please. And many of you are already aware of the TIP policy as well as the African American Improvement Plan. But for those who may not be so familiar, also wanted to touch on these points. The community and SBCUSD have agreed to work together, work together towards these goals. Third grade ELA, math in grades 4, 5, 8, A through G in college and career readiness, advanced course access and success, family engagement and equity in special education. Next slide, please. Thank you. And how can the board and cabinet support? One area is Um, one area is direct sites to include specific action plans for African-American student success in their SIPSA's starting in 2022. Push ETSA and other departments to provide support as needed. Uh, the second one, direct sites to progress monitor and report African-American student progress in ELA and math five to six times a year. Share this data publicly. Um, the third one, include African-American student success and evaluations for principals and other leaders. And I would also like to, um, encourage the board to revisit the commitment that was made by our former, um, Superintendent Dr. Marsden to hold school administration accountable, but not just hold them accountable along with monitoring and providing support where needed. Um, and then four is support the fall 2022 launch of Sankofa at Hunt, Double A Ho, and Pacific High School. Next slide, please. And as we, uh, wrap up our few minutes, uh, would like to, um, just in honor of Dr. Margaret Hill, her life, her work, and her legacy, we at DAC, the District African American Advisory Council, hope to continue to do what she did, which is center, um, our students and, um, you know, continue to do good works. And with that being said, I just again want to thank the board, um, the superintendent, directors, assistant suites, um, as well as my fellow DAC officers, Mia Cooper, Rashana Benjamin, and, um, the ETSA Department, uh, for all of the support that they provide to make sure, um, DAC is doing what DAC should do. Thank you.
All righty, thank you for that outstanding report, Ms. Robinson. We have a question from, uh, it looks like Dr. Flores and, uh, as well as Ms. Rosales Medina. Dr. Flores?
Yes, Davan, Davana, I just want to thank you, uh, and your, um, uh, and the DAC for all the work that you do. Uh, you've, you all have made a big difference in the lives of our African-American students. And your specific, uh, you know, asks are, are very key and very important. And we have to, um, show, like you say, evidence. And, um, and, uh, you know, I have great hope in our, our staff, our teachers, and our cabinet that, uh, we will move that way. Uh, I know that, uh, Mrs. Applegate, uh,'s team is very, very, um, focused on that. So thank you so much for, for all that you do.
Thank you, Dr. Flores.
All right, thank you, Dr. Flores. Ms. Rosales Medina?
If we can go back to the second to last slide, it was where it says, um, where, which basically are the asks, um, from the district. I think it was one of the, one of the points. It was the second to last, where it says.
Maybe five, slide five?
Yeah, yes, there you go. And so in, in those, I would love to see how we can receive a copy of that just to ensure that we are following this, as well as number three. So it's holding, you know, the success, the success in evaluation for principals and other leaders such as superintendents, assistant superintendents, directors, um, vice principals. So have you had a discussion or was, have we done any evaluation on behalf of, of triple A, uh, D, D-triple A-C, um, um, committee, or is this something new?
It's actually not new. Um, prior to, uh, Dr. Marsden leaving, as we started to reconvene the African-American Task Force, there was a lot of conversation around, um, the, um, achievement of African-American students at each school was going to be evaluated. I was going to be part of the principal evaluation. And then, you know, Dr. Marsden was leaving and, and I think it just kind of fizzled out. And then the pandemic hit. Uh, but it's not a new conversation. It was happening before.
Okay, so it's just making sure that we're continuing those conversations. And, uh, not sure exactly who would be within the school district of the assistant superintendent to make sure that we are doing, um, the evaluations, um, to make sure that we are, you know, following some of the guidelines. And each group, you know, I imagine they have, each of them have, um, some requests as well. So thank you for bringing this up.
And Abigail, I also just want to mention that it's just, the accountability is just as important that we're providing the support that is needed for the principals in the school sites, um, where they, where they might find themselves struggling in this area.
Of course. And it's not just the, to note where are some of the areas they can help, we can help them improve, um, but, but providing those professional, um, development opportunities as well. So no, I, I get that definitely.
Thank you.
All right, thank you again.
Medina, if I could just add that we are going to be putting that in the SPSA's for the 2223 school year. Right now, they're creating the template and our principals and our, our stakeholders will be trained because that was an ask from the African-American Task Force. And so that will be included.
Ms. Applegate, since that's in the SIPSA, is that also on the LCAP?
Yes, that will be part of it. Will that be part of the next, the 20, um, 2023 school year? Yes, 2023. Twenty-four? It's this year that we are creating the templates and implementing. Okay. The training. Is there a reason why the, oh, it's because we're already in January, you know, kick up, okay. They'll be doing May for next year. Okay.
All right, thank you. Let's go ahead and introduce the DLEC.
Okay, so our, our last parent advisory group, obviously, um, not least, but not, how do they say? Least but not last, our District English Learner Advisory Council. And I believe we have the president here to represent. Ms. Loetop.
Good evening and welcome.
Thank you. Um, the other communities told me that they were going to give me their extra minutes. Okay? So we're good. Um, I did brought, um, my advisor, Mrs. Nettles, because, uh, we're going to do it in bilingual because to respect our community and because we represent our DLEC as a bilingual. So, um, as you know, I've been a president for almost the past three years. Uh, we have Ms. Anna Villalvazo as a vice president, Ms. Romy Gaminas, secretary, Ms. Catalina Castillo, parliamentarian, and Ms. Lilia Sisneros as DLEC advisor. Hemos roto el récord de ser el comité DILAC de tres años consecutivos gracias a la pandemia.
Good evening, board members. Um, Lilia Sisneros Felix, advisor for the last almost three years, uh, with, uh, DLEC and past president. Buenas tardes, Presidente Dr. Scott Wyatt, Vice Presidente Tillman, Superintendent Dr. Irvin, Mesa Directiva y Gabinete, y personal presente, Audencia de la Distancia, y muy feliz año 2021.
Good afternoon, uh, Mr. President, uh, Dr. Wyatt Scott, Vice President, Mr. Tillman, Superintendent Irvin, board members, uh, and, uh, cabinet, personal present, and the audience, um, at the distance and here, uh, presence. Very happy New Year 2022.
Our goals for English learners are ensuring that all English learners reclassify and graduate multilingual, multicultural, and college and career-ready students. Will have the academic and linguistic skills, confidence, and competence needed to make positive changes for the future in order to participate fully and meaningfully in the 21st century economically, politically, culturally, and intellectual life of our nation and global society. Our DLEC stake, um, state priorities. Develop a district master plan for education programs and programs and services for English learners. The district master plan will take into consideration the school site master plans. Conducting a district-wide needed, needs assessment on a school-by-school basis. Establishment of district programs, goals, and objectives for programs and services for English learners. Development of a plan to ensure compliance with any applicable teacher and/or teacher aid requirements. Review and comment on the school district reclassification procedures. Review and comment on the written notifications required to be sent to parents and guardians. If the DLEC acts as the English Learner Parent Advisory Committee under California Education Code Section 52063 and 52062, the DLEC shall review and comment on the development of, of annual update or, uh, or annual update of the local control accountability plan or the LCAP.
Celebraciones de DILAC. Mayor asistencia en las reuniones virtuales de DILAC. Apoyo continuo de DILAC a los estudiantes durante la pandemia. Se agregaron recursos, apoyo para estudiantes-aprendices de inglés. Interés de comunidad en la, en el aumento de los programas de lenguaje dual y en los sitios escolares. Y me gustaría añadir que a pesar de la pandemia hemos tenido un gran número de reclasificados y que los jóvenes recibieron el sello de la excelencia.
DLEC celebrations. Increase attendance at virtual DLEC meetings. DLEC continue student support during the pandemic. Added resources, supports for English learner students, community interest in increasing of dual language programs at school sites. And also would like to add that, um, despite the COVID, the pandemic that we've, uh, have been going through, we've had a great number of students that were reclassified and that the youth, um, in our schools have received the, the seal of, um, bilingualcy.
Sugerencias de DILAC. Mantener y ampliar a los programas existentes para estudiantes-aprendices de inglés. Seguir considerando a los padres como socios y tener una cuenta nuestras, tener en cuenta nuestras voces en los procesos de tomar decisiones en el respecto a los estudiantes de inglés. Seguir apoyando y contactando a los padres de manera oportuna con capacitaciones y reuniones informativas. Por favor, use otros medios de comunicación y no solo el Parent Square. Continuar brindando servicios de interpretación y traducción de alta calidad.
DLEC suggestions. Keep and expand existing programs for English learners. Continue to see parents as partners and consider our voices in the decisions-making process where it pertains to English learners. Continue to support and reach out to parents in a timely manner with training and informational meetings. Please use other means of communication and not only the Parent Square. Continue to provide high-quality interpretation and translation services.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry, there's one more. I'm sorry.
Apoyo de la mesa directiva para DILAC. Continuar con los fondos para los estudiantes-aprendices de inglés y los programas de doble idioma. Continuar a contratar maestros bilingues y otro personal de apoyo para, para apoyar a nuestros estudiantes-aprendices de inglés y cursos de doble idioma. Es extremadamente importante continuar proporcionando transporte para que nuestros estudiantes-aprendices de inglés y doble idioma para que tengan equidad y acceso a los programas.
And lastly, board support to, uh, for DILAC. Continue the funding for English learner students and dual language programs. Continue to hire bilingual teachers and other support personnel to support our, our English learners and dual language courses. It is extremely important to continue to provide transportation for our English learners and dual language students to have equity and access in programs.
Thank you.
All righty, thank you very much. And it looks like we have a couple of questions, starting with Ms. Rosales Medina.
Um, primeramente, muchas gracias. Thank you so much for your presentation. I do want to ask, um, since it was mentioned, you know, verbally in the, in previous, um, uh, groups as well as, as now, the Parent Square. And, um, have you tried to indicate what kind of methods? Because I'm hoping the district is not just relying on Parent Square, because I know that's something that we have to try to match the culture of our communities here in San Bernardino. So mi pregunta es, um, básicamente he oído que han mencionado, um, Parent Square. Ojalá que no nomás están usando Parent Square como una comunicación para los padres, porque cada comunidad tiene necesidades diferentes en cómo recibir la comunicación. Ustedes han comentado sobre cuáles son las mejores, um, decisiones que les gustarían recibir el mensaje.
Um, we've had some parents communicate to us, um, in different ways that Parent Square does not work for everyone because of, uh, internet, or some parents don't have phones. Uh, was even suggested that the time that we're going through right now because of COVID, we might have to go back to old-fashioned flyers. That would be the way that would be guaranteed that the, the parents are receiving the information that, uh, needs to get to their parent, the parents.
And, uh, we did receive a lot of suggestions that they're not receiving the information through Parent Square because a lot of parents don't go into the system. They don't go into, uh, checking out Parent Square. Some of them told us that they cannot download it on their phone. Some of them told us that they have the flip phone. And, um, well, there was a lot of comments about it. And one of the suggestions was going back to the flyers. I live in a community that a lot of people don't use the, the computers. A lot of people don't use, uh, the internet, especially to go and check emails that you guys sent and, and, um, Parent Square and all that. So I did ask questions about it. And they say that they don't understand a lot of, uh, like the Parent Square. They don't know how to go into it. And, and I know family engagement is doing a lot of, um, classes to teach the parents, but there we go. They have to go on their computer because of the pandemic. So they don't know how to go, and go into the computer and take those classes. So I know that, uh, in my community, they like flyers. They, they, they're always asking me for flyers because that's one of the ways that, that they communicate with us more.
Thank you.
Y otra cosa también, muchos se acostumbraron a las llamadas telefónicas. Como hacen las llamadas cuando faltan los estudiantes. Um, hay que tener en consideración que nuestra comunidad hispana hay mucha gente, um, este, que no está literalmente capacitada para leer o escribir. Entonces las llamadas telefónicas son muy buenas. We have to, um, have to consider that in our community, a lot of our parents are illiterate, um, or are too.
We have to consider that in our community, a lot of our parents are illiterate or too busy. So they relied on the phone calls. As, you know, when my kids, my four kids that graduated from this district were in the district, when we used to get the phone calls about them being late or not showing up to class, that's a good way for us to keep track of the situations or the things that are going on.
And did you want to follow, because I have one more, but this is toward the district. So in one of the presentations, I know I request that we were looking at not all parents on Parent Square, but it felt like we were only using that as a means. I'm hoping we're using multiple methods to communicate with parents. If you can't answer it now, I would like to find out, what is the percentage of parents on Parent Square? And then, of course, the other means of communication. If it's not today, definitely provide that information to us so at least we could see that we're providing multiple communications as well.
We have about, I believe, ginger, ninety percent of our parents on Parent Square. So we hear the suggestions, so duly note it. So we'll get back with the board, but duly note it. Thank you.
Dr. Flores?
Yes, I wanted to follow up. So the robocalls, people like that, right? Our parents like it. Given that eighty percent of our community is Latino and I think probably maybe forty to fifty percent are Spanish-speaking, that that would be another way of communicating that parents are used to. And I, you know, I'm hard of hearing and I did bring my hearing aids today. Were you guys saying flyers? Were you saying flyers? Okay, flyers, okay. And so that's what we've always done in the past, so parents are used to it. And I have to also empathize with the parents because it took me forever to learn how to do Parent Square. And I think I'm pretty literate, but someone had to show me how to do it. And so, and then if you don't have the proper phone and so forth, it's very difficult. So thank you very much. But I wanted to also commend DILAC. Since I've been on the board, you are very organized. Your meetings are highly professional. And I just want to commend you for all the work that you do. Quiero darles las gracias a todos por el trabajo tremendo que hacen y que siempre están ahí para sus estudiantes, para los maestros. You're always there supporting your children, the teachers, your administrators. And I think also your need to share more knowledge with our parents, especially our parents that aren't able to come physically. But now that we have remote learning and possibly able to, I don't know, do our kids still have computers? Do they still have the computers, Mr. Irvin? Okay, so perhaps, you know, giving more workshops to show parents how to log on for workshops and so forth, given the pandemic. But even not given the pandemic, I mean, if they're not able to come physically, I think that would be really appropriate. Is that what you were also saying? And I really, señora, si se nos quiere traducir lo que dije. O te recuerdas? Do you understand?
No, no recuerdo muy bien, perdón.
Oh, it's okay. I just said that it's, dije que es muy importante que también tengamos juntas y talleres virtuales. Es muy importante porque algunas veces ustedes, yo sé, no pueden venir físicamente a las juntas para que aprenden a hacer muchas cosas y acerca de sus asuntos que necesitan aprender. Es muy importante. Also, I think that last recommendation, some of the recommendations you gave the board, I'd like to have, Mrs. Applegate, I'd like to have, I think we should have the, all of the presentations, please, so we can see, because, you know, I wasn't writing down everything. But the notion of equity that you brought up about our dual language programs and providing transportation is very key. I am on the transportation task force and so is Ms. Bayos. And so we need to know that. I didn't realize that our bilingual kids were transported, you know, to the schools. So that's really important for us to consider in terms of equity. So I thank you very much for your presentation.
We thank you for hearing us out and also thank you for commending us because this is what DILAC is about. We represent those parents that can't come to the meetings and we are the voices. We are part of the community. Even if we don't have children in the district anymore, but we love the community. And I have a passion for DILAC. You know it, Dr. Flores. And that's my job. That's why parents choose us, because they know who's going to represent them, because they can be here, so.
Well, all our parents are so important. We're partners in teaching and raising our kids.
Nuestro trabajo es ser la voz de esos padres que no pueden estar aquí presentes. Y como le he dicho anteriormente, si nos tenemos que poner los guantes, nos los ponemos.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you, Dr. Flores, and we have quite a list now going, so.
I would like to comment just something about what Dr. Flores said. And when you said we're very good on doing our meetings, I would like to say thanks, thanks to Ms. Alba. She's our teacher. She showed us. She teaches how to run DILAC. She did it for over twenty-five years, so I think we learn a lot from her and we're very respectful to her that she showed us the right way.
All right, good. Ms. Alba. Mr. Tillman, and I apologize on to who was next after Mr. Tillman. Did you see that?
Didn't.
Okay, Dr. Daddy Rogers and Ms. Bayos.
So if someone could translate, I appreciate it too for me when I.
I was translating.
Yeah, make my comments. First of all, I want to thank all the committees for coming today. The role you play is huge for us and I love to get your feedback and your frank honesty that you always have given us over the years. So I hope we continue that relationship. Someone want to say that in Spanish? Oh, do we? Okay, so this is being translated? No, long as it's being translated, I'm fine, okay. No, it's being translated, that's fine, okay.
But is it being translated to our viewers?
Right, that's what I'm talking about. I think that's what she's doing, right?
I didn't know that, actually. I thought maybe it was just people in attendance.
No, she only translates if there's people in the audience.
Well, I do want to have it so that anybody watching.
We have a good translator right here, so.
Okay, she can translate for me then. Okay, great.
Correction, interpreter. I have to make that correction all the time on this because interpreter is speaking, translation is writing.
Thank you very much.
If I remember correctly.
You don't have to do that part, that's fine. But I heard your information, I mean, I love the fact you brought the concern about the communication skills.
Me da gusto el escuchar que tocaste el tema sobre las habilidades de la comunicación.
And the way that we're communicating.
Y la forma en que nos estamos comunicando.
And I think sometimes we lose sight of the fact that we not only have parents, but also grandparents.
En veces nos damos, no nos damos cuenta de que estamos perdiendo, estamos perdiendo de vista no solamente a los padres sino que también a los abuelos.
And in this time of the pandemic, they're playing even a bigger role in our students' lives, as you well know.
En este tiempo de pandemia, nos damos cuenta que ellos están jugando un rol muy importante en este tiempo de la pandemia.
And just like I have an aunt who will never ever get a cellphone.
Así como yo tengo una tía que nunca va a usar el teléfono celular.
And I switched out my mom's flip phone for a smartphone.
Y le cambié a mi mamá su teléfono que se abre y cierra por un teléfono inteligente.
But she still only makes phone calls.
Pero todavía aún así solamente lo usa para hacer llamadas telefónicas.
She does not text, she does not download apps.
No manda textos, no habla aplicaciones.
She uses a smartphone to make phone calls.
El teléfono inteligente lo usa para hacer llamadas.
And there's an anxiety there about having to learn.
Y hay una ansiedad ahí por el tener que aprender.
And so for a lot of us, just the fact that we have our grandparents and other folks helping, you don't want to try to force them to learn a technology if it stresses them out.
Y con el simple hecho de saber de que tenemos a abuelos ahí que no quieren usar la tecnología por el miedo, la ansiedad, no queremos obligar a que usen cosas a los que ellos no están acostumbrados.
I think it is critical to go back to some of the things that we know work. And one of those things are flyers and the phone calls. So I just want to make sure that we, through the superintendent and staff, that we make sure that we understand you're not going to get a hundred percent participation with the other means that we're using right now.
Es muy importante el darnos cuenta de que tenemos que usar otros métodos de educación como las llamadas robocap o los volantes porque no queremos forzar a nadie a que vaya a usar algo que no están acostumbrados a hacer.
But as a board, we'll look to hear information to ensure that we're doing those other means that you talked about.
Como Mesa Directiva, nos encanta escuchar las opiniones y todo lo que los padres quieren y esperan de nosotros.
Thank you very much.
Muchísimas gracias.
Mr. Tillman, Dr. Daddy Rogers.
Thank you, Dr. Wyatt, President Wyatt. And Mr. Tillman answered part of it, but I wanted to make sure we were clear on the interpretation.
El señor Tillman mencionó algo y quiero solamente estar clara en el respecto de la interpretación.
And I wanted to be clear that, Mrs. Narrows, you are interpreting tonight on our behalf or was it you were helping out? Because I know you also.
Señoras y señores, yo quiero saber si usted está interpretando por parte de nosotros o por su parte. And the answer is, it's on my behalf. Because I.
I brought her over.
And I.
I was pulled over here.
Right, and I know you were going to have to answer me in the midst of that. But I wanted to be clear with the district because this has come up before.
Porque quiero aclarar algo con el distrito porque ya se ha mencionado esto anteriormente.
Our board members shouldn't have to interpret or shouldn't, yeah, shouldn't have to translate.
Nuestros miembros de la Mesa Directiva no deberían de ser los que estén interpretando.
And this is to the district.
Y esto es para el distrito.
We need to get that corrected.
Necesitamos corregir esto.
It happens too often.
Ocurre demasiado, con mucha frecuencia.
And I wasn't sure if we had the interpreter.
Y no estaba yo segura si tenemos el intérprete aquí esta noche.
Here with us tonight. But we appreciate you, Mrs. Narrows, because we know that, I know I've seen at one point in time, I know you were doing interpretation.
Estaba haciendo servicio de interpretación para nosotros.
So we need to get it clear. Because I know I thought, perhaps you were or not, but we need to be sure because we need everyone and especially, you know, us as board members.
Necesitamos a todos nosotros, especialmente nosotros de la Mesa Directiva.
We need to hear the information at the same time.
Necesitamos escuchar información al mismo tiempo.
So that we're all on the same page.
Para que todos estemos en la misma página.
Including our audience.
Incluyendo nuestra audiencia.
And not only our audience, but we need to do whatever we need to do for our viewing audience. If that's a, if there is a clarity lost there. Because when we were virtual.
Porque es cuando estamos virtualmente.
We were able to press the button and do the interpretation. So we're losing some communication, so I'm asking the district.
Entonces estamos hablando, pidiendo al distrito.
Going forward, can we get this clear?
Para movernos adelante, podemos aclarar esto.
Thank you.
Gracias.
And then my clarifying question that I did have for you all.
Y ahora mi pregunta para aclarar que sí tenía para ustedes.
Is when you say flyers, is it to have them mailed to you or is it to have them picked up at the school site?
Cuando hablaron sobre volantes, están refiriéndose a mandarle los volantes por correspondencia o dárselos en mano.
It all depends what kind of flyer. If it's a flyer, for example, just last week we sent out the flyer for Martin Luther King.
Depende qué tipo de volantes sea el que van a mandar. Por ejemplo, nosotros mandamos el volante de Dr. Martin Luther King la semana pasada.
And it was sent out from the district to our school.
La mandó, las mandaron del distrito a nuestras escuelas.
And then I count them and I send them to each teacher and they send them to their parents.
Yo los conté y se los mandé a la, a la de cada de los maestros y se les distribuyeron.
We received the flyer with the letter from the superintendent.
Recibimos los volantes con una carta del superintendente.
About the COVID test that was going to send out.
Sobre las pruebas de COVID que iban a hacer, se iban a mandar.
They only sent us the one email and we printed out.
Nos mandaron solamente el correo electrónico y lo imprimimos y fue decisión de nuestra escuela.
To send it to all the parents.
Para mandárselos a los padres.
So I had to do seven hundred pages.
Así que tuve que hacer setecientas páginas.
Four pages of each one of them, so.
Cuatro páginas de cada uno.
Seven hundred times four.
So hagan la matemática, setecientos por cuatro.
So I did send out the flyers.
Sí mandamos los volantes. Sé que fue mucho papel que se gastó. A pesar de que recibimos cientos de llamadas telefónicas.
Asking how to do the COVID test.
Preguntándonos cómo se hacía la prueba del COVID.
Even though we sent out the flyer.
A pesar de que mandamos el volante.
Okay, so the district captured that, that there is still some clarification needed.
Así que el distrito captó eso, que todavía hay clarificaciones que son necesarias hacerse.
Gracias, thank you.
Ms. Bayos?
Well, first of all, I just want to say thank you to all of the advisory committees that came out tonight, but specifically DILAC. Solamente quiero agradecer a todos los comités que vinieron a dar su presentación, especialmente a DILAC. I don't want to delay and extend because I know we have other business to attend. No quiero tomar mucho tiempo porque sé que tenemos otras áreas que tenemos que continuar discutiendo. Just a couple comments, so it's, we've all heard loud and clear that there is a gap between communication, so. Creo que todos hemos escuchado muy claro que hay un. Gracias, que hay una brecha en la comunicación. No todas las personas saben utilizar Parent Square. Not everybody knows how to use Parent Square. And so, me again, I would like to ask that we do look into that. I think phone calls is a good option. Printing pages, I think could be a good option too. However, sometimes it may not be the most effective as Ms. Loera has mentioned it. Because parents still had questions even though flyers did go out. Yo pienso que tal vez las llamadas telefónicas pueden ser una buena opción, ya que a lo mejor no siempre los papeles impresos funcionan. Como la señora Loera acaba de comentar, mandaron papeles a casa y de todos nos tenían muchas preguntas. Entonces a veces es mejor llamadas o conversaciones. So sometimes maybe a phone call or an actual conversation. Also, just to kind of respond to Dr. Rogers, I personally would like to translate myself. I think that we should have a translator available. I just, I also like to, one, practice my Spanish, but two, communicate directly to the community. Yo por lo personal me gusta traducirme a mí misma porque yo lo puedo hacer y a veces siento que mi mensaje se pierde si alguien más me lo traduce. Pero sí creo que deberemos tener un intérprete para que pueda estar interpretando simultáneamente conforme las demás personas hablan. And, let me see if I'm, I'm going really fast because I know, I want to get moving with the board meeting. I think that was pretty much it though. Yeah. So thank you so much. So creo que es todo. Lo hice un poquito rápido porque sé que tenemos que avanzar con la junta, pero es todo. Muchas gracias.
Thank you, Ms. Bayos. Ms. Rosales Medina?
I just wanted to mention that, you know, many of us, we do this. It's also about representation for our audiences at home, that even here, that they see Latinos that are on the board, that we speak Spanish and they hear from us. And even when they translate, it doesn't come out the same. So it's important to hear from us directly. So I hope that we continue that. I know that, you know, depending on who, you know, I know it takes a little longer, but that's Spanish. That's when you have multiple languages. So I just want to say that I hope that we continue that. And I'll let them translate in this part, but just want to make sure that we do that.
Dr. Daddy Rogers?
And the reason why I'm saying I get, I understand all of that, but the lost in translations, I've had others just mention that to me. That's not what was said. So we also need to step up our, you know, who we, and not you, Mrs. Narrows, you're doing your job tonight. But if we don't have good interpreters, because this has been said to me, it's been said in the county, I can go somewhere at the state, we have to hire the right people because that translation, one word, can change. And even me speaking my native tongue, I cannot repeat every single thing I said because I'm just trying to get it in. So I'm just trying to make sure we don't lose that continuity. And it's been mentioned to me even by the board. I believe that, you know, some in the past in our translation has been lost. And so some of us do speak a little bit of this and a little bit of that. My clarity is not to disrespect any culture. It is to ensure that the interpretation is correct because it's been brought to my attention.
Solamente para dar continuidad a lo que estaba diciendo. Es porque se ha tocado el tema con anterioridad, no solamente aquí en la Mesa Directiva, en otras partes, u otras personas que asisten a la mesa directiva. no solamente aquí en la Mesa Directiva, en otras partes, u otras personas que asisten a las reuniones, que dicen que la interpretación se pierde fácilmente con una sola palabra. Entonces hay que tener cuidado con las personas que hacen la interpretación, porque se menciona en todas partes. Todos podemos hablar un poquito de aquí, un poquito de este otro idioma. Aún a pesar de eso, yo con mi idioma nativo me equivoco en usar palabras. Entonces por eso quiero aclarar esto, que tenemos que dar continuidad a este servicio para que la interpretación, con una simple palabra, cambie todo.
Ina mask, I just wanted to mention, I agree with you, there has been interpreters that hasn't. Lilia Sisneros, you've done amazing job with interpreting, so I'm not sure what's going on here, honestly. So I'm hoping that we're going to still continue with your services, because we do, those that of us speak Spanish, we get to hear which ones are making mistakes and which ones have been doing great. So I get what you're saying.
I agree with Dr. Dottie as well, because we, in the past, we're sitting here, we're saying she's not interpreting correctly. And I, we would tell our colleagues, that's not what, that's not what they said. And that was really very, very difficult, you know. And thank you, señora Sisneros, you're an excellent interpreter. Thank you.
I would just like to say one comment about this, is I really appreciate that you guys are saying this, because I've been looking at the board meetings for years, and there's a lot of things that they don't, they don't say it the right way, like you said. And it's true, it's true, you lose that, you lose that spot that, I understand what you guys are saying, and then when they translate, they interpret it, it's different. And it's like, okay, this is not right, like you said.
Dr. Wyatt, can I bring clarity to our superintendent regarding this whole issue of sitting here listening? Typically, the district employs a translator. The translator typically sits in the back of the room, and that individual translates for the district.
Típicamente, ayuno...
No, no, let me finish, please. I hear you. But with the district, has a translator that works, that's in the back of the room that we employ as a district. That individual translates. Typically, when individuals come into the meeting and they need translation services, then the translator in the back gives them the headphones, they put those on, she tells them what channel it is. They're on, whether it's two, channel three, channel four, and she translates. If it's online, our tech team sets up the system, so it's connected to the online system. So typically, board members do not translate from the NICEs, because again, that is the role of the district translator. So I'll leave it at that. I don't want to prolong this any longer. But going forward, the district does employ a translator. Their role and responsibility is to translate from the back. However, with that said, if there's an issue with translation, and the board or any member of the public has concerns with the individual who's doing the translation, it is our duty and responsibility to make sure we have an individual in the back who's doing it accurately. So I want to leave it at that. Thank you, Mr. Board President.
Thank you, Ms. Irvin.
Do they do it online also? Because, I mean, I didn't hear her say, doing it through...
And if that's an issue, we'll take care of that. That has never been brought to my attention until today. No one has made any, no one has brought up any issues and concerns regarding translations until today. So now that this issue has brought to our attention, it's been duly noted. We will now move forward and make sure at the next meeting, we have all these systems in place. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to reiterate, Ms. Irvin, what Ms. Vios said, what Ms. Medina said, and what I also said. We would like to express ourselves in our native language, because it comes out a lot better. And we are able, we're bilingual, we're highly bilingual. And we can, we can interpret our own language in both languages. So as board members who are completely billyiterate, bilingual, and highly proficient, that is really important for us to do. And as a board, I would recommend that we do that.
I will get a legal opinion on that from my attorneys. I'm not in agreement with that, because I think that when you have the public here, if you're going to, if the board's going to decide to do their own translation, then you're going to be here a long time. That's why we hired a translator. Every, every high-quality district in the state has a translator that provides translation. So, but again, if you're saying there's an issue with the translation services, then that should be brought to my attention so we can make that, so we can determine that. So I'll go out and seek a legal opinion. I'll get back with the board through a Friday update. Thank you.
Tillman. And then we'll move forward after this comment.
Yeah, and, and, Mr. Irvin, I think, I understand definitely what Dr. Flores and Ms. Medina and Ms. Rosales are saying. They're saying that there are nuances that are lost in interpretation. So a person who can, has the gift and the ability to speak both languages, if they can render their thoughts themselves, there's no substitute for that. So, and there's, there's not, there's no need for a legal opinion. And let me, let me finish. Board members can make comments. And if they make comments in English and then they make it in Spanish, there's nothing, there's no reason for a legal opinion. But that, that, that's another subject. So I think there's no, no, I have clear understanding why my fellow board members would rather say it in their own, speak Spanish themselves, and I think it benefits the district. Because it gives the parents of the district more confidence hearing it the way you really mean it from your heart. There is feeling in speech. So I think it's great that you all would say it again when you think it's necessary to say it in Spanish and in English. But thank you for your presentation tonight.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
On another note, I want the board to consider, under parent advisories, and we can bring it up and agenda it later, a foster youth learner committee. Because I think, just having got the information about these key groups, that foster youth is another key group. And do we have a foster youth committee already? So maybe we can agenda it to discuss, but I think it'd be a good idea. Thank you.
Arty folks, thank you to all the parents and the parent advisory committees. I think, I've said this many times before up here, that the relationship with our parents is critical to the success of our students. So we definitely appreciate those presentations, because we know we can't do it on our own. We'll definitely get back on the interpretation services. And I think we heard loud and clear about flyers going home as well. So I'll leave it at that. So we'll move on to, it looks like, closed session public comments.
Mr. President, just a question for you. We've scheduled public comments at seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock, yes.
And it is seven o'clock, so I just looked to the board to see, I think it'd be good for us to...
I agree.
Do public comments now? Thank you.
Yeah, let's go, you know, and I will agree to that. Let's go ahead and do that, because, one, we know that sometimes our closed sessions do go for a while. Actually, quite some time. We're going to attempt to do a better job of that. So let's go ahead and move on to public comments. Karen, thank you. All right, our first public comment, I do apologize on the name here. I might botch this one, but it looks like Rochelle Galle Gudie, Gudie? Gudie? Okay.
It's coming up.
Thank you. It looks French, I think, right? Is it? I don't know. I apologize about that.
That's okay. My name is Rochelle Galle Gudie. I'm here to speak for, on behalf of my student. I do offer my condolences to Margaret Hill and her family. But however, I'm also here to ask for the resignation of the principal of Middle College and also the principal of Sangagoneo High School. My student, I was, I received a phone call on Saturday, which was January 7th, 2022, informing me, informing me that my child was kicked out of Middle College. I had no foreign knowledge. I hear, I have a letter that's addressed to my student, not to the parent. I had no communication. They told me they do not speak with parents, they only communicate with students. I have three failing grades here from my student. That, what my middle college, I believe she is a Kimberly Jackson. I believe she is a counselor for Middle College. But on my child's transcript, the classes that she said that she failed, she passed with Bs. Her GPA is a 3.0. I'm asking for an actual private meeting. I did ask for a private meeting. However, the superintendent secretary, which is Nicole, told me to come here. And I really think that is very insensitive of Nicole to know that Dr. Hill was having a personal vigilance, basically, with her family. I think it's very inconsiderate. And as you, as you also stated that, you're very concerned about bilingual. I would like to know why our African-American history is not actually taught in school, the truth, being that we were slaves, being that we were kings and priests and other countries and continents. But however, we are deemed the lowest. Not only that, but you have a high rate, ratesy of African-American students that are failing. Middle College received $11 million, and only those Hispanic students receive that money. I'm here to protest and also ask for the resignation of the principal, which is Espinoza, I believe that is. And I also want the resignation for Delatorre for Sangagoneo High School, because my student was, in fact, beaten with a cellphone, jumped by three or four students, and nothing was done as far as her's concerned. Now you have deemed my child inadequate when I have actual documentation from your school, which would be, which I would, which I would consider fraudulent, right? Because now I'm not understanding how, on the transcript that your administrators, who you govern, right, is telling me that my child failed, and not only failed, but she was kicked out during the time, not only that, but of Martin Luther King legacy. I don't appreciate it. I'm here to express my deepest concern, especially for these members that are, I'm sorry, these administrators that are in play, that are in power, that's able to do whatever they want to do to our children when we're not around. And not only that, with no communication, you have a letter from, from Middle College stating, "to my child, not to the parent"? No, this needs to be looked in. And I... I would ask that I have a private meeting, because they have humiliated my child. This is a humiliation. Now you're saying, I'm sorry, not you, and I don't mean, I don't mean to say you, but the San Bernardino Unified School District is saying that my child is inadequate. And not only that, my child worked very hard, is very stressful. Not only that she received high honors from Sangagoneo High School, I have certificates, I have awards that has been granted to her. And you kick her out? Because you, I don't even understand why you kicked her out, because you had no communication. You're talking about a communication breakdown? You're talking about a communication barrier with students, teachers, and parents? Well, I'm an activist for all students. I'm here to activate my authority, and also to make sure that this never happens to another student, especially an African-American, because they are on the actual low-level education system that they are highly not recommended to graduate from high school.
Time.
Hey, Ms. Gudie, thank you. We do have some questions, and I'll emphasize questions only, folks.
Yeah, no, it's a question with regards to, so the thing is that this also happened to my daughter many, many years ago. They called it the Black, the Bloody Friday. By Monday, these students were no longer there. So I guess my question is more towards the district. And the reality is that this happened to my daughter transitioning back into high school. A lot of the kids were failing high school because they were placed in the wrong classes. And so I'm wondering if this is something that we're working on, and you don't have to answer it today, but that way we're really looking at, has things not changed? I know it's improved a little bit, but then now I'm hearing this case, so definitely want an update on what's going on.
I'll get back with you.
Thank you, Dr. Flores.
Yes, I empathize with you. I'm a mom, and I would be outraged if that happened to my daughter. And just to clarify, your daughter's grades are 3.0 and above, right? And she received that letter, you did not receive anything, and it says that she's no longer there. Did the, did the principal sign that, or did the counselor sign it?
I can show the actual evidence.
I can't hear you.
Do you want me to show you the actual evidence?
No, 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 I don't need to know that. Anyway, anyway.
There's no signature.
I think, I think, Mr. Irvin, we have to examine our procedures. We have to not allow this to happen again, because it is humiliating. I mean, I was a, I mean, any, any child should not be humiliated at all. And if she has great, you know, if she's performing, that, I mean, and you have evidence of that. And so I think we need to look at our procedures so that this doesn't happen again, ever. Ever, ever, ever. And so thank you for bringing it up to our attention. And I believe that, Mr. Irvin, you will be looking into it.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Flores. And Mr. Irvin has said they will be following up with it. Dr. Rogers.
Correct. And just looking, my vision is still good. I think I've seen the logo of Valley College, and we have a dual relationship there. So when the superintendent examines those, we want to make sure where it came from or how it came to you, and what were they referring to? Were they referring to the classes there or the onsite classes? Because this doesn't sound like it's similar to, we did make an adjustment to the policies over there at Middle College. But I think, Mr. Irvin, you heard all of it, and we'll be meeting with her sooner than later. So please, thank you for bringing your concern here. I'm not really sure why we said move forward to the board, but it's good that you did bring it to our attention, because it needs to be handled immediately. But there's a dual relationship in there, and there might have been something. But still, it shouldn't have happened that way. So we look forward to getting with our superintendent and rectifying this as soon as possible, and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, one more, one more question, please. Ms. Vios.
Just, just really quickly, I just wanted to clarify, is your student no longer at Middle College?
That's correct.
As of when?
The seventh Saturday, when I was, when I received a personal call from the counselor's cellphone, stating that my daughter was kicked out.
Okay, okay. And thank you for clarifying that. I just want to sincerely apologize on the district's behalf. You know, no parent should, I know how it is, and I know how frustrating it can be. So, you know, for what it's worth, I am sorry. And, you know, they will be looking into it, as you've heard. And I really do hope that it is a misunderstanding of some sort, because, but I'm sorry. And thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Could you let Katrina know your information, and then, and then basically, we will touch base with you, and we'll follow up with the board in the Friday update after that conversation.
All righty, thank you, Ms. Gudie. The next public comment is Lavina Beckley. Welcome, Ms. Beckley.
Is your mic on, or are you?
Okay.
Okay.
So thank you, Superintendent. Mr. Irvin, appreciate you having us here, and Dr. Wyatt, Board President, and all board members. I'm here today because we, the National Resource Development Council for Inclusion and Equity, which is a group of Black professional women, have come together to, in 2022, saying, "we want to be responsible for our children." And for our children, we definitely mean our Black children, but we also mean all children. And one of the things that I want to thank, Dr. Irvin and your team, because you guys have been very inclusive, Katrina as well, in really being receptive to what it is we're doing. And what it is we're doing is we're, we're beginning with the end in mind. So I'm going to start this statement right now with saying, "our goal is to be invited to come back and share with you a full concept as to what we believe is necessary and needed to move our children forward." And, and what we're focusing on is three things. One, we recognize that, as the county has, that obviously racism is not only a public health issue, but we also believe that it's soon to become an educational issue. Because we look at the statistics of our Black children, and consistently, and this is, I'm speaking to the choir... statistics of our Black children, and consistently, and this is, I'm speaking to the choir, I'm sure, because I'm sure you're well aware of the facts as related to disparities for our Black children, but we are at the bottom. We're number one for Black students as far as mental health, illness needs. We're number one for those needs going untreated, meaning even after they're being diagnosed and they're being referred to go out. They're not being addressed, they don't have the transportation to get there. And we're also number one when it comes to, in my heart and my passion, student athletes. Black athletes are number one when it comes to having trauma, stress, and unaddressed issues to where they have no place for release. Most athletes, I'm not sure if you're aware, I did this as well, you escape and you play sports to not have to maybe sometimes deal with going home, right? And then once sports is not the outlet, you end up against a black wall, and you have no place to go. And so Simone Viles, if you listen, if you read her story, you'll see she hit that wall unfortunately at the Olympics, but it was a place where she ended up not having a place to go. And what we realize is that there's a systemic barrier, there's a systemic model that's missing in most programs that are being created that don't get to the root of what our children are actually addressing. And so our group, and we're led by SEEM, Kiana Webb, who's well-known in this community and has done some amazing things in building and learning how to serve and give. Our number-one mantra, and we want to work with your task force, and we'd love to share that with how we think this would work together, is bring in resources. My firm is a grant-writing firm, and I see the resources, and I won't share it now, but we'll share, the resources that we could tap into now to address this issue in a way that we can create something that's long-lasting. We're well aware that there's resources that are available in the district, but we also know that, thinking with the end in mind, we can't just focus on the here and now. We've got to create something that's sustainable, and it's going to not only affect the kids that are in school today, but those that are in school tomorrow and for days to come. Kiana was planning on being here today, and she asked me to read this, because she wanted me to emphasize the fact that it's about teaching our kids to build a wealth mindset. And even though we're here, all of us, to support them, we also have to give them ownership and understanding how to support themselves. And that building up of a systemic model and doing that is really key. So I say this, oh, she says, let me say, she says, true service is more than giving something to someone or helping someone, it is also about providing access to create learning for them, to help themselves and others. What we can provide in our participation and working with your task force is to help build, in the resiliency centers, is knowledge that we have gained from our time with McDonald's, and they have fourteen, fifteen McDonald's that they have throughout the region, where we not only taught our workers how to receive, but also how to serve. In this platform, we were able to address disparities in health and education, but also in being the number one in the nation for retention of Black and minority workers. And the question is, what was it that they were doing that actually resonated with our kids that maybe others weren't carrying out? And this may sound presumptuous, but it was because, and I know my time is up, is because they felt that they were Black, and they understood things that sometimes are not necessarily written in the writing, it's not written, but it's in the walls. So my request, on behalf of SEEM and on behalf of the National Resource Development Council, is to be able to continue to work with you and work with your coordinated efforts of your task force to create a resiliency, or you're calling it a wellness center, we're calling it a resiliency wellness center, and show how we can bring resources in to create the regional model that I think is an amazing concept that you're talking about, but also to create one in every single school across the district with your help and support.
Thank you, Ms. Beckley. We do have a question from Dr. Dottie Rogers.
Think right at the end, you, because I said, are we in the area of wellness, which is what I thought you had said earlier as well.
Okay.
But I want to make sure of that, because I know we just met on a strategic, but what I don't have and would like to see the inclusive, we didn't get a date as to when the task force was coming, did we?
No.
Okay. So they kind of sidebar, and I'm trying to find out. I know.
Hi, Dr. Flores.
So, no, she's not.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, you guys were, but we wanted to find out, because I know at one of our recent board meetings as well, we're putting together the task force, we're back, getting back on track for what we're looking at for wellness. And then we met last week with some of our board members and the team, our district staff. But what I'm trying to find out is how soon our task force is moving forward, because we know that there are others that have come before us. And I know they're still sidebar.
If I can add, Dr. Rogers, we recommended that we agendize
Okay, because that was.
the item, and have input from the public and any other organizations or our students. And that's what our recommendation was going to be, that we agendize
Yeah, so that's why.
Input from all our, you know, our organizations.
Stakeholders, right. But what I'm, more specifically, when is that happening? Doc, have you had a chance to find that out? Did we get a timeline on that? And if not, do we need to agendize it to get a timeline, or do we need to find out?
So let me respond, if that's okay. So the Wellness Advisory will be meeting again in February.
Okay.
As you know, we have had a plan for the last few years in trying to implement wellness centers, wellness spaces at every one of our schools. Now, as the conversation has evolved over the last few months, and the board's direction is providing wellness centers full-scale, we've had to readjust what our plan is so that we can get that done in three years instead of five years. And so the work has already started. We will continue to involve stakeholder groups. And so the work around now is readjusting our plan, moving the timelines forward, getting more people, getting our students involved, getting our parents involved, so that, you know, we include peoples in the decisions that affect them.
Okay.
As we're looking at these wellness centers and looking at full-scale centers, we're looking at mental health, but also dental, vision, as well as medical. And so, you know, we've had conversations around what they look like at each of our high schools, looking at them regionally, but also making sure that we're not forgetting our youngest children. They also need a space for wellness. So we have a comprehensive plan that we're tweaking, that we had that conversation last week.
Yes.
And we will continue to have that conversation, and we'll provide dates for all the Wellness Advisory Committees that you will more than invite it to attend.
You hit it right. That last part was most crucial to me, is that, because we had said we wanted to make sure our community partners are aware or connected. And so, you know, she's one that's here tonight, because I don't want to keep directing people in different spots, but I want to make sure that we know that it's coming up. So, sounds like, and are you oversight, or?
So I am oversight. I was not at the meeting, as I was distributing COVID tests in the warehouse.
Yeah, remember that.
So, yes, I am, and working with Sam and Colleen, in making sure that we move this initiative forward.
Remember, we're in the beginning stages of planning for the wellness center in terms of regionalizing. So we're in the beginning stages. She's right, there's a couple of more meetings we have to have. So we just have to be patient, because again, we have to put systems in place and structures in place as we move forward, so.
Oh, got it. So I won't hold you any longer on my question, because I wanted to make sure, because we are trying to get this information out to the community partners that are interested and can assist with the work, as we said. So we have to take the opportunity to do that, when we have you in front of us, and then make the commitment for them to connect and have the information. So Dr. Rodriguez is our contact, I know, because there's a whole bunch of, I don't know, going on down here, but just want you to be clear.
Okay.
And then, Dr. Flores, I think.
I want to thank you for inspiring us and for adding resiliency to it, you know? And I remember the, you know, the passage in the Bible where it says, I can get, when Jesus said, I can give them fish, but I'm going to teach them how to fish. I'm going to teach them how to fish, so they can feed themselves. And so when you said that, that reminded me of that. And I just want to thank you, and like Dr. Roger said, you know, we're going to, along the way, bring in the stakeholders and so forth. And I also, Dr. Rodriguez, you weren't there, but in the community schools concept, recreation is also part of it. We only talked about the wellness part.
Mm-hmm.
We didn't talk about the other aspects, the recreational aspects for our kids, that would place to go.
Yes.
And then also after school, and then also our families. So there's three components to it. And wellness is just one of them. So, thank you so much.
Well, thank you. And I did see the model that was up in Bakersfield. I thought it was an amazing model, and I'm assuming that that's exactly, or very similar to what may happen here. And I think it's definitely on the right track, if that's something that's being emulated. My last statement is, I would love to create a sense of urgency around the meetings, and I know things take time.
All right. It is time, and I do apologize. And folks, we need to ask questions, not engage in conversation, please. We are not asking questions or engaging with the public, so please keep it to questions. Thank you.
Okay. And there's resources I just wanted you to be aware of.
I know, I'm sorry I had to cut you off, but we've got to move on. Mr. Francisco Ramirez? Welcome, Mr. Ramirez. Mike, sir?
Turn it on. Ah, teach me how to fish. Good evening, everyone. My name is Francisco Ramirez. I am a single, actually, I co-parent my three kids, and really proud of them. The reason I'm here today is I am honored to work for an organization, Child Wafers, that's given me the opportunity to learn tools, skills, that has helped me as a social worker and also as a program specialist. And what I want to talk about is, last year, the Children's Network had a conference, and actually, it was for San Bernardino County. I advocated for myself to attend that conference. And in that conference, they went over the five protective factors. When I went to the participant of individuals that attended that conference, I was enlightened that we had twenty participants from our district, from San Bernardino Unified School District. And one of those people that was on that board, in that meeting or that conference, was a board member. And I remember back last year, I was excited, because there was a board member that I could touch these ideas with, I could talk to these, about this concept, and she would understand. As I'm sitting down in the back, I see her name illuminated tonight, and my heart sank. It's been sink since I heard Ms. Dr. Hill passed away. I was looking forward to sharing these factors. It's called the Five Protective Factors. And has anybody heard about the Five Protective Factors? So the Five Protective Factors surrounds itself with five things: parental resiliency, social connections, concrete support in times of need, which we're doing a phenomenal job with our food banks, knowledge of parenting and child development, and social emotional competence of children. And today, I want to talk about that fifth concept, which is teaching our kids how to deal with their emotions. And what I share with that is, because we're not doing, we don't know how. That's the problem. We don't know how, you know? And we need to start talking to our districts, not just us. Let's talk about Rollins. Let's talk about Haruba Unified School District, which is doing a phenomenal job. Let's talk about Riverside Unified School District is doing great. Let's talk about this network, you know? Let's build. One of those things that I have gained the opportunity to learn is, is the Nutrient Fathers Program. It's an evidence-based program. It teaches our fathers how to be present in their kids, that they're valued. And I want our dads to be able to say, I love you, son. You're a phenomenal, terrific individual. I think, as I'm resonating, I don't know if you guys follow the news, but Taco Bell, there was an employee at Taco Bell in LA County that somebody was given a $200 bill. It was fake. Someone shot into Taco Bell. A dad got lost. And I remember the child, as he was talking to the news, he says, I never told my dad that I loved him. I never told my dad that I hugged him and I cared for him. And that's why we need to teach skills. And why I teach, why I share this is, recently, last month, in October, my son said, Dad, I got something. Let me show you. And I'm like, what is it, son? He says, I got this little certificate from my school. It says, I was kind today in PE. And obviously, they gave me a date, the name of my child. And what I did, it gave me an opportunity to reinforce that that was a great character building. And he asked me, Dad, did I do the right job? Did I do good? I was like, Dad, you did excellent, because you don't need to ask if someone needs help. You just go and do it. Just be a doer. And when you start doing that, you start building character. And that's what our kids need. They need to build character. They need to be respectful, be kind. And they don't know how. You know why they don't know how? Because it's culture generational. Maybe the parents also suffer with being a single dad, being a single mom. And that's why our district, I bring back to the Five Protective Factors, because this is a great framework that we could build on. It's evidence-based, it's supported nationally to prevent child abuse and neglect. That's what we want to do. We want to strengthen our families, don't we? I got thirty seconds. I just want to appreciate all Board members. I want to welcome Dr. Scott as our President, also our Vice President, Danny Tillman. I just want to let you know that, as I remember Ms. Hill, she was always involved. She was always approachable. And I'm asking our Board members to be more part of the community. Dr. Rogers is a great firm leader. She actually has breakfast with the community, and I've been so lucky to join her in one of those meetings. But overall, we have a great, we have an empty space. The metronome of our board is gone, but she has all this legacy, all this knowledge. And the most important thing is, let's care for the student, let's care for the parent, and let's care for our community.
All righty, thank you, Mr. Ramirez. All right. No questions. We'll move on to our next public speaker, Mrs. Seneros Felix, Lilia. Welcome.
Good evening, once again. And the reason I'm here to speak in regards to, as mentioned earlier, my contract. On January the 12th, I don't want to go too far too long. I received an email from Mrs. Gonzalez's secretary, offering me an interpreting job for January 31st, because I had submitted the documents needed for my contract to come and to be on the agenda. And of course, I accepted the job, which was supposed to be set for January 31st. The same day, hours later, I received a second email from her, the secretary again, stating that there had been a mistake, quote unquote, that the job had been given to someone else. The same day, I received an email from our superintendent, where it was sent on behalf of him, which included all the, his cabinet members. In regards to an email that one of her parents sent out, asking for advice because of her feelings in regards to the COVID, the way it's been handled in our schools with the liaisons, the lack of tests, and everything. The email that read specifically saying that superintendent said to me that he would appreciate if I have any comments, anything to say, to say to him in person, in private, that I was a good leader, that I could be a good influence to our community, but that he did not like my comments. Immediately, I get a gut feeling, of course, right? So I called Mrs. Salva, and I said, Mrs. Salva, this is happening. What do you think? She laughed. And she said, I received the same email, and guess what? My contract was canceled. Right away, I sent to this later, I sent a text to Mrs. Gonzalez, because I've had two contracts, two prior contracts with the district before. And I asked her to be honest with me, that I wanted to know if my contract had gone through or not. Be honest. If it was, it's your job, you know? Don't get Be honest. If it was, it's your job, you know. Don't get, you know, I'm not going to beat you up about it. If I don't, didn't get it, didn't get it. And it took her a while to respond to my text. She did it through email. And all she said to me was, "Your contract came back to me, to us, family engagement, and it's not going to go to board. It's not going to go on the agenda. And it's eight seed, Dr. Sandra Rodriguez." So my question to you is now, is this a form of retaliation against me? Because that's the way I take it. I put contracts with other districts on hold, because this is my home. This is my community. And the way I see it, you're denying my contract, but the worst part of it is, you're denying a service to a community that gives you a job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Seneros. We do have one question from, excuse me, one question, please, from Ms. Rosales Medina.
It's more of a comment, because I think you did a great job in explaining what you were going to say, but it's just more of a question towards the district to ensure that we're sending out the messages. We did pass a policy regarding retaliation, and this was not just for employees. So I just want to make sure that we're making that clear. Those that do face, feel like they have been retaliated, please file a report with Mike Medina at the district level.
Thank you, Ms. Rosales Medina. Dr. Flores.
I just want to reiterate and clarify that anyone has a right to criticize us. We're, the cabinet, anyone has the right. And there should be no retaliation. This board passed a resolution, or policy, no, it was policy, that we would not allow retaliation. And I thank you very much. We learned from your criticism. We learned from your wisdom. We're not perfect. We don't, we're not out there. You are out there with the community and parents, and we need to know all of these things. And so I respect you for bringing this up, but also, you know, as a board, we need to make sure that we don't have other forms of retaliation against our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Flores.
Yeah, I want to bring some clarity to that. I'm glad that the board brought that up. Because, so basically, what I'm hearing from the board is, so basically, what I'm hearing here today is, if a community member, a contractor, a provider says disparaging, make disparaging remarks, disrespectful comments about the district, we should give out those individual contracts. I just want to get clarity on that, because we want to bring forth-
Mr. President, I don't even think this is on the agenda. I think you need to stop, I'm going to finish. I think you need to stop it if we want to put it on the agenda, so we can get full clarity, because I did see an email, but I don't know if all the board members were on the email. And so I mentioned that earlier, so I think we need to, so we can all be clear. Before we go down that road, Mr. President, we need to, that's why I always say, it's important for all of our board members to know, so we can weigh in adequately and then be able to communicate with our, our public. And I did respond. I responded that I would follow up with the district, as I always do, because that is what we're supposed to do. But where we are now is going to warrant us to have a conversation some way and not like this. So that's what I'm saying.
I'll bring clarity in the Friday update regarding those emails. I'll make sure-
But what I'm saying to the, to the board president, I don't know if it's just clarity in that, you know, the board, because everybody, I'm, everybody didn't see it, from what I saw. So that, you know, we have to have a way that we can have a discussion on it. And if that means, you know, just contracts in general, again, I asked for this some months ago, and we were going to have a conversation, then we went into, we were going to do some audits and some other things, whatever. And this is what happens every single time. Let's get it right, so we can give the adequate information and follow up properly, so we don't have this, this looseness of retaliation or perception of it, because it's not good.
Absolutely. And I'll bring, I will bring clarity in the Friday update. And also, we'll be glad if a board member requests. We'll be glad to agendize where we are with the contracts and the audit and the process that we're going through. We'll be glad to bring that to the public if we need to. And so the district will prepare to bring that final audit. We're still doing some final doc, you know, making some final document changes on it.
My concern was more about that, the verbiage that we spoke briefly about. So we're clear on that verbiage. We had a small conversation, and it's been a while now. So, Mr. President.
I recommend we agendize it.
Okay.
I was going to recommend that we agendize this, Mr. President. And it's a big issue. And I just, and I haven't, I don't even know what you guys are talking about, but I would like to agendize it.
Thank you, Dr. Flores. Ms. Abios.
Oh, it's just basically the same thing. I'm completely, you know, I'm not sure what's happening. It sounds like there were some, you know, emails that some of us got, and maybe some of us didn't. And so I would also like to agendize. That way, we all get the opportunity to hear about it and talk about it.
Well, we wouldn't be able to do it publicly, but we can bring contracts, we can bring contracts, because we can't talk about one specific contractor, but we can bring all contracts forward and bring forward the audit that we did. We can't talk about one specific contractor.
No, no, no. Right, right. I mean, you can-
Mr. President, I am not talking about-
Flores, let's wait for Ms. Abios to finish. There's other people ahead of you.
I, I understand, and I think that we can, I would like to have a update, whether it's through a Friday update or however it is, but I would also agree to agendize contracts in general to go over the language on that.
We'll provide some, some information in the Friday update, and then also, we will work to bring contracts forward in general. Mr. Tillman.
Just to be perfectly clear, historically, this board welcomes the input from our public, open and honest. It's not always what we want to hear, but we, we always benefit from it. And it's never going to be right, and I'm not saying this happened, but it would never be right for someone to cancel a contract because of what someone said in a, about the district. I'm an elected official. The cabinet gets paid a whole lot of money to be able to receive the information from the public without retaliating. And I'm not saying we retaliate, but I can guarantee you, me personally, as a board member, we're sure that you never get retaliated. And if there was a contract you were supposed to get, and the only reason why you didn't get it was because of something you said in the email, I can guarantee you, this board won't support that. So we'll make sure we work with you to have you resubmit the contract, and this board should agendize it and vote on it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I just want to add to, thank you for that, Mr. Tillman. I've been a volunteer parent for many years, and with this new change in our district, I feel like, not only myself, as, as a parent leader, we get criticized as well. A lot of parents think that being part of D-Lack, we have a salary. We don't. We do it out of our heart, out of our passion voluntarily, and yet, we are criticized. And we take it, because we know that's what we signed up for. I just don't want to feel like in a district that four children graduated from San Bernardino High School, and I voiced for not only my kids, but mainly for other kids. And people that we supported to be in positions turn around, and as we say in Spanish, nos dan la puñalada por la espalda. They stab us on the back. Once they get our support, it's not right, because they're here, like I said it before. Every one of you are here because the children in our district.
Mrs. Seneros, it's time, but I will-
Thank you. I don't want to feel, just don't want to feel like I'm walking on eggshells.
I just wanted to support what Mr. Tillman said. And yes, Mr. Tillman, I agree that we should agendize her contract, so that we can vote on it.
We can agendize that. We can not agendize a contract, because if they have to submit the contract to the district for services, if it's been submitted for services, then we can agendize it. So we can't do that here. We are, we are following the procedures.
No, I'm requesting it. I'm requesting-
Dr. Rodriguez, that contract that, that she's talking about, is that?
It's in process.
Okay, that's what I thought. Thank you. That contract is in process. Dr. Flores, and I believe Dr. Rogers, if there is a concern for an agendized item, we'll do that during board comments? All right. Thank you. All right. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. We will move on to the next public comment, and that is Dr. Treasure Ortiz. Are you here, Dr. Ortiz? Oh, there she is. Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. Happy New Year, even though on the saddest of times. Since the passing of Dr. Margaret Hill, I've thought about the community's response to her loss, and it's been huge. And as we lose people who mean so much to us and to our community, it makes us reflect on our own legacies. If we go tomorrow, what are people going to say about us? Will we be missed? Because we've made a difference? Or will we not be missed because of the awful impact we've had on our community and the people around us? So I'm here tonight because I've done what I think is my due diligence on the city side, but you've never seen me. And I've never seen you at City Hall. And that has to change. Because the failure in the city fails our students, and the failures in the school is failing the city in the long run. Now, the problem is, is we're messy. The city, the school district, it's a personality conflict. We don't always have to get along. That's not our mission. In fact, it obscures from what our ultimate goal is, which is to serve the residents, to serve the students. So this year, we cannot wait. I hate the political pandering of, who are we going to endorse for November? And who are we going to push and move? And, no, because tomorrow, the kids are affected. Tomorrow, the residents are being failed. You are more likely to be recruited into a gang than you are to college in our city. That's a problem. That is a district and city problem. These kids get six to eight hours of peace inside of a school, but that depends on what school they're at. Because while everybody has an equal opportunity to go to school in our city, there is far from equity in the level of education they are receiving, and I've seen it firsthand. Now, I don't normally jump out of my sandbox unless I do my due diligence and my homework. So this year, I've done it. And I've gone in to make sure that I fully understand the concepts. It's very easy to understand policy, practice, and implementation, and then come in as a sideline quarterback and tell you guys how to run a district. But what I'm going to tell you is, what I'm seeing is you have students and scholars that are being fostered in a way that is unbelievable to me. It makes my heart just happy, the way the kids that want to be loved. And then you have schools are creating a school-to-prison pipeline, where there is no discipline. There are no consequences, in a world that will put handcuffs, handcuffs on them by the same police officers that they waved at when they were in elementary school. Now, we are a device, are a very diverse board. We look like our community. So let's start acting like examples to them, because I'll tell you what, the white kids that live next to the black kids, that live next to the Hispanic kids, are all realizing the same traumas in the streets. Their parents are in warring games. And as they grow up, they're going to become more divided. So we can't be the division. We cannot be the doctors that are the exception to the Latina and Black rules. We have to be the example. When they see us, they need to know they can beat us, all the time in our city. It doesn't take leaving here to achieve. What it takes is us rising up and bringing our own in, and saying, "We are not going to fail you, because we already made it." It's, that's the easy way out. So I want you guys to come, because our city's in turmoil. We're on the precipice of something, and it could be greater, it could be awful. And in our district, we, our teachers are quitting. The, the lack of COVID response is unbelievable. That $287 million, I don't know where you guys put it, because it's not in distancing, it's not in PPE equipment. The teachers are overwhelmed, the kids are sick. We have to do more, and our city has no equal response. They don't talk about COVID, they don't talk about vaccines. They don't talk about people being tired, working minimum wage jobs, having no access to healthcare. We have to. We have to change the narrative, and we have to intersect and meet, so that we can drive this city together. We have, it's, it's not going to work anymore. The parents are the residents. The kids are the residents too. So whatever you guys need, whatever we can do, come to the meetings tomorrow night. Just sit and listen. I'm just in awe of what I'm watching right here. It's just, it's almost like a council meeting, but you're a little bit nicer. It's just not this, supposed to be this way. For those of you who haven't lived here your whole life, this is not normal. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ortiz. We have a question for you.
Just want to say thank you for coming, and I'll, I'll say it now. I am coming tomorrow. I had planning, planned to come, but to thank again the city for what they're going to do for Dr. Hill, but it is a start, and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
All righty, our next public comment. I'm making sure there's no more questions. Our light system is not working, so we apologize for that. So, Dr. Rogers, you get all the rest of the questions. I'm just kidding. All right, our next public comment is, Ms. Rosa Loera, please. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm here once again. I just wanted to say thank you. Thank you for, even though we're not perfect, we're not ready for COVID, we were not ready at all for COVID, but we're not ready for all this pandemic that is coming back. We're not ready for all this that is coming back, and I know we didn't have the COVID test ready for us to send out for the parents and for the kids, but I just wanted to say thank you for, for working with us, for working with the parents, working to have the best for the schools. And even though there's a lot of sickness out there, we have a big response of the parents sending their kids to school. And, and I know it's really hard for the parents to send them out, and I'm there every morning. And every morning, every parent says, "Take care of my kids. Take care of my kids." Oh my God, it's like, you feel that responsibility on top of your back, and it's hard. It's so hard to say. I just wanted to bring it up, that we need to do something about it. I know it's really hard for you guys, but we need to do something that can help the community, because this is getting out of control. The teachers are getting sick. There's a lot of students getting sick, and nobody's paying attention. A lot of the parents this week are being telling me that they're not going to send their, their kids to school no more. This morning, I asked the principal, "How many kids are we missing?" I was waiting for a 300 number. I was sure that she was going to say over 300 number, and she said, "135." From 700 kids, 135. For me, that's a big number, because before, we used to have 20, 10, 15, but now, 135, that's a big number. And when I came this morning, I was thinking that she was going to say over 300. Thank to God, the parents said, "No, we have to send them back to school. We have to work with the community to make it safe." So if we, parents, are doing our best to have our kids be healthy, please, please help us. Sending those COVID tests home, it helped a lot. It did help a lot. But we need to do something more, because it's not only the kids. It's the personnel, and it's the teachers. The last time I heard, it was over 400 teachers that didn't go to school, to, to go teach. I don't know what's the number right now, and I would really like to know the number, because I know there's a lot of teachers getting sick. It's one teacher, and it's 30 students. Those 30 students, you don't know which one of them are sick. And even though they're there with them all day long, they get sick too, the teachers. So just letting you guys know that. We need to do something about it, please. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And we have one question from Ms. Rosales Medina.
Just wanted to clarify, what site was this?
Vermont.
When?
Today.
Today. The reason why I'm jotting it down, we have a presentation. I'm hoping those, those type of numbers are showing as well. So if you can stay, or if you want to, if you're not able to stay, look at it virtually, because we also want to make sure we're getting these numbers as well. So thank you for that update.
You're welcome.
Ms. Rosales Medina, Mr. Tillman.
Just as Ms. Rosales Medina said, that's the reason why we have the presentation scheduled for tonight at, what item is it?
8.1?
On 8.1, we have the COVID-19 response update. So all the information will be there. So you'll hear where we're at, the status, what type of numbers you're talking about at that presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. And I did, let me just bring this out, that I did ask if there's a, I know there's a page where you guys are putting the numbers, that we're having so much numbers, so much numbers of COVID. And I know it's not updated. I know for sure.
We'll talk about all that at 8.1. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. And then, Karen, I believe we have a virtual caller, Ms. Marina Girati?
Yes, you're correct. If she's available, please unmute.
Yes, good evening. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Awesome. Well, good evening, thank you for having me. I will make it brief. My name is Marina, and I am the recruitment and enrollment manager for Big Brothers, Big Sisters of the Inland Empire. This is National Mentoring Month, and we're just so proud to serve your students and region. And we wanted to, just more than anything, remind the community that we are here wanting and willing. We serve our children facing 6 to 17 years old, and they're all linked with a free one-on-one mentor. So boys with boys, girls with girls. Statistics show that over 99% of our children do graduate high school, and they do improve social skills as well as academics. So we just want to, again, remind that we're here. Anyone that is interested in referring children to us can go on iebigs.org or communicate with me directly at muriarte@iебigs.org. A lot of the children that we face come from single-parent homes and have noticed a detrimental change to their confidence, social abilities, as well as just the fact that we believe in igniting potential and helping these children reach that potential. So just thanks for having us, and know that we're here in present, wanting to serve as many of your children as possible.
Thank you, Ms. Girati. It looks like we have one question from Dr. Flores, if you're still there.
Yes.
Can you give us that information in writing? Can we ask for that? I mean, Mr.--
Can I put it in your chat box?
I don't know how you do that, but that's really important, because you're saying that you serve a lot of our students, and that's really important. And it's Big Brothers, right?
Yeah, Big Brothers, Big Sisters, correct.
Big Sisters, okay. I don't know who she gives that to.
The gender will reach out to her tomorrow. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much.
Wonderful, thank you. You guys have a good evening.
Thank you, have a good evening. All right, I believe that is the last comment for public comments. And before we go to closed session, we will receive closed-session public comments. And we do have one that I'm aware of. And let me get that real quick. I already had it ready. Thank you, Mr.-- Ms. Ashley Akala, please come up. Thank you.
What is the timer's? Oh, there you go.
Good evening, President Wyatt, Vice President Tillman, Superintendent Irvin, members of the Board and Cabinet. I am Ashley Bidasalcala, President of the San Bernardino Teachers Association. And I'm speaking to you tonight on behalf of our 3,000 members. SBTAs an integral part of the fabric of this community. And tonight, we are feeling this tremendous loss of one of the pillars of our community, Dr. Hill. From her beginnings as a teacher, a principal, and then school board member, many of us crossed paths with her, whether it was at our school site or somewhere else in the district along the way. I will remember her as she organized the Many Mom Mobs to welcome our students as they arrived on campuses across the district. I was able to witness that joy firsthand as she greeted them at Riley College Prep Academy on that hot summer August morning. I think you were there, too, Dr. Rogers. Dr. Hill believed in all of us. She cared deeply about her community and our students and their teachers. And her presence will be greatly missed by us all. As I came before the Board last month, I want to remind you that, again, our members are putting the needs of our district, our students, and the broader community above their own needs for a safe, virus-free learning environment. We have met multiple times at the negotiations table throughout the fall. And other districts that are close by have already decided on respectable, on-schedule salary raises prior to us coming to any agreement, which we still have not. The fact that we have not settled on a fair, respectable, on-schedule raise more than five months into the year is shameful. And I say this on the heels of what the governor announced last week. The 2223 budget will include a 5.33% COLA for the next fiscal year, which compounds the 5% that was already received this year. The district's team told SBTAs that it would revise its proposal to reflect the governor's fiscal outlook and that we would meet. We still have not yet met. And given that there's a 5% COLA from this year and a 5.33 ongoing for next year, the district also has a funding balance that can more than cover our proposal. And we believe that it is fair and affordable. We have been a working, fair partner with SBCUSD for many years. And we have, both parties have rewarded each other in our willingness to collaborate and execute shared goals. We hope this partnership yields benefits with an ongoing, permanent salary raise. Thank you for your time, and good night.
Thank you, Ms. Akala. Any questions? I don't see any. All righty, that should be it for closed-session comments. So at this time, we'll adjourn to closed session, and we will be reporting out after that. Thank you. All righty, folks. As you can see, we're still full of energy up here, and we're going to continue on. Actions reported from closed session, and we'll go to 4.1, Approval of Coordinator for Special Education Speech, DIS-SALPA Services.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. Any discussion? All right, we'll go and take a vote. All right, motion carries. Be resolved that the Board of Education approved the appointment of following employee, Lisa Noe, I hope I'm saying that correctly, Noe or Noe. Coordinator, Special Education Speech, DIS-SALPA Services, effective date, work year, and salary to be determined. Funding source, 802.
So moved.
Oh. We already did that.
We did that one?
I tried to read it, sorry. I tried to, but you guys beat me to it. That's all right. All right, 4.2. Let me read this one. Be resolved, the Board of Education accepts and adopts the recommendation and findings of the hearing panel based on a review of the panel's findings, of facts, and recommendation, and orders the expulsion of the following students with identification numbers as listed in accordance with the Board rules and regulations and compliance with Education Code 48900.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. Any discussion? All right, let's vote. All right, motion carries, 4.3. Students recommended for suspension or expulsion excluding mandatory offenses but remanded to youth court for other means of corrections, positive youth development. Be it resolved, the Board of Education accepts and adopts the recommendation and findings of facts of positive youth development and orders the suspension or expulsion of the following students with the identification numbers as listed in accordance with the Board rules and regulations and in compliance with Education Code 48900.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. Any discussion? All right, let's vote. All right, motion carries, 4.4. Students recommended for expulsion but terminated and stood in assertive discipline due to completion of youth court, availability of other means of corrections, and/or due process errors. Be it resolved, the Board of Education approves the following students were recommended for expulsion, but expulsion is deemed inappropriate based on due process errors, insufficient evidence, and/or the availability of other means of correction and compliance with Education Code 48900. Therefore, although they were recommended for expulsion, expulsion is not granted.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. Any discussion? All right, let's vote. All right, we'll move on to 4.5, Other Closed Session Action. Be resolved that the Board of Education accepts the notice of recommendation for disciplinary action and statement of charges to spend without pay for 10 days the following classified employee from his or her employment at the district, HR Class 2122-11ER. All right, there's no motion, no second? No, there was not. So no action taken?
If there's not a motion or a second, then it would be no action taken.
Okay, no action--
Does that mean that this item cannot come back?
It can come back.
It can come back?
The district can bring it back if they need to, if it's even necessary. But typically, there's a motion, a first and a second, and then the board votes. If there's no motion at all, then that means it dies. That means, it means what it means.
Okay, 4.5, no action taken. We already went over 5.1, received public comments, which was very nice. I'm glad we did that earlier. And thank you to the Board for doing that. And thank you, Public, for your comments. We appreciate it. Hopefully, we're all in bed now. 6.1, Memorandum of Understanding. Oh, do we did that one already? We did that one already, too. Thank you. 6.2, we're moving right along. Public hearing for tentative agreement, reopen or article, gosh darn it, was that?
I don't think we done 6, we didn't do 6.1.
Did you open up the public hearing?
Oh, shoot, I didn't know.
Yeah, we did, didn't we?
Yeah, that was different. That was 10.2. You haven't done 6.1.
Oh, yeah, 6.1, yeah, you're right.
Let me go ahead and open up public hearing.
You need to help me.
All righty, my apologies. I knew, we got so many about these vaccinations and stuff. 6.1, Memorandum of Understanding, Vaccination Verification Between California School Employees Association and the San Diego City Schools, Chapter Number 183, and the San Diego City Unified School District. All right, let me--
There are no public comments.
Mr. President, can I go ahead?
Dr. Flores.
I would like, as a point of clarification, is this MOU considered in the COVID-19 leave that you're going to be presenting, Ms. Irvin?
This MOU was signed back in October between the district and CSEA. And it takes into account all safety measures associated with COVID. It takes into account workplace safety measures, vaccination verification, and such. So we will talk tonight about the leave, but this does not address that piece. Dr. Flores.
Oh, this MOU does not address the--
No, this was about vaccination verification, how we would work with CSEA to make sure its members are protected with any decisions that we make.
I do see, though, here on D, that they will be placed on paid leave for the duration and will not be required to utilize current or accrued sick leave and will not suffer no loss of pay. That's D.
Well, if that, because we weren't under the guidelines for SB 95 at that time, should we get Board direction tonight to go back and negotiate or work with our unions on leaves? We definitely would do that. And it would supersede this here.
We would, okay, so, but I didn't see it in this. So, but we'll talk about it when you present it. Okay, all right. Thank you.
Other comments or concerns, discussion? No? All right. Going to close it. Be resolved that the Board of Education adopts the Memorandum of Understanding, Vaccination Verification Between California School Employees Association and the San Diego City Schools, Chapter Number 183, and the San Diego City Unified School District.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. Let's vote.
Did we vote on the other one?
6.1.
Oh, is it MOU? Okay. Are we supposed, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we're still on 6.1.
On 6.1? Okay, okay.
Dr. Flores, we closed a public hearing, he read the resolution. There was a motion, and we voted on it.
Okay, thank you. Sorry.
I'm still learning too, Dr. Flores.
My mind was ahead.
All right, now, motion carries on that, and then we'll move on to 6.2. Let me make sure I do this one right. All right, public hearing for tentative agreement, reopen or article 26, Term of Agreement, Section 2, Renegotiation of Wages and Benefits between the San Diego City Unified School District and California School Employees Association, Chapter Number 183, is now open. Are there any comments?
No public comments.
Any Board comments?
Close it. Close it, and then the motion.
I'm supposed to read it, and then I get to bang it and close it, I guess, no?
You have to close the public--
Oh, all right. We'll close public hearing. Boy, this direction's a little bit different. Be it resolved that the Board of Education adopts tentative agreement, reopen or article 26, Term of Agreement, Section 2, Renegotiation of Wages and Benefits between the San Diego City Unified School District, California School Employees Association, and its Chapter Number 183.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Any more discussion? Let's vote. All right, motion carries, on to 7.0, Reports by Union Organizations. 7.1, San Diego Teachers Association. No report? All right, 7.2, California School Employees Association. No report. 7.3, Communication Workers of America. No report. 7.4, San Diego School Police Officers Association. All right, no report. On to 8.0, Reports and Presentations, 8.1, COVID-19 Response Update. And let's see who we have.
It would be me.
All right.
All right. It is now--
And you are vibrant and awake. I appreciate that.
It is 11:05. Let's see how we can get through this one. All right. So we want to thank the Board today for allowing us the opportunity to review our COVID response. We wanted to give you an update as we have started the new year and give you more information about what we're doing as far as our staffing, as well as our student attendance. Next slide, please. As you can see, the objectives for this particular presentation are to provide you a status update on the current COVID conditions that we're experiencing, the number of cases in our community, school district, and in our cities that do feed into us. We also want to review with you our mitigation strategies. We want to give you a current picture of what it looks like for our student absences, our staff absenteeism. We also want to give you some information about our staffing contingency strategy. It's all hands on deck. And then we're going to end today's presentation with what we're here for, which is teaching and learning, and give you a video from elementary instruction that is titled "Learning in Action." Next slide, please. So as we begin all of our presentations around COVID, we want to just remember what are our guiding principles around this work. And just to kind of familiarize us and remind us of what we do and all of the things that we are trying to accomplish, we keep these four principles in mind. Ensuring health and, ensure health and physical safety of staff and students. Adhere to federal, state, and county guidance. Provide high-quality learning-- Provide high-quality learning experiences. And providing a safe and accessible working conditions for our employees. Next slide, please. So, our current COVID conditions, we have Eric Vitier, who is our safety officer, who has been really instrumental in helping us to navigate the COVID pandemic and our response to that. Is he on the line? All right, so I'm going to pass it over to Officer Vitier.
Thank you, Dr. Rodriguez. Good evening, board, and Happy New Year. We wanted just to start with the current cases within our area. So, on the far left, you'll see a year ago, January of 2021, when we were closed, on average, our daily case rate per 100,000 was between 150 and 230. And that was the peak of the winter surge a year ago. The date of August 8th through the 14th is when we opened schools for this school year, which is your second bullet point. And you'll notice our community cases, we're in the double digits at that point. Moving all the way to the right, it shows the case rates last provided by the county. Before winter break, we were averaging about six new student cases being reported to us, to the schools by our parents. And that has currently jumped to an average of 77 cases a day last week alone, so, in the week of 110. So, this does confirm what we all know, that we are in the middle of another winter surge. Next slide, please. So, on our mitigation and response strategies, we want to take a moment to briefly remind the board and highlight, you know, this unprecedented, extremely challenging, yet rewarding work that our team is doing. Our COVID liaisons are at every school every day managing this on the front lines for our families. Many of our COVID liaisons are also parents or other community members, and we couldn't do this work without them. We know testing, most recently, has been a scarcity within our community. To meet these challenges, we've ramped up our testing efforts. Last week, our liaisons conducted over 6,000 tests at our schools alone. That was the most of any week to date as we've managed the pandemic or offered testing. Before winter break, we offered drive-through COVID testing. Over 2,300 of our staff and students took advantage of this opportunity. In this past Friday, as you heard Dr. Rodriguez mention earlier in the meeting, over 47,000 home test kits were distributed to our schools and then sent home with our students. Through our communications department, we encouraged our families to test yesterday before returning to school today. Testing is also available five days a week at all of our schools for our staff and our students. We also do five-day-a-week testing for our employees at the Board of Education, PDC. We offer drive-through testing for symptomatic employees and also saliva-based testing. Beginning today, the federal government is providing four at-home test kits per home by going to covidtests.gov. Our County Department of Public Health has four case investigators assigned to the school district to assist AM and district leaders manage our response and cross-check the work that we're doing. We have also pushed out a major allotment of N95 masks to all of our sites and departments to help support our staff and students who want that extra layer of protection. Next slide, please.
Mr. Vitier, I apologize. We did have a question on that slide. I know I'm trying to get through this presentation, but there was one on this particular side.
Mr. Vitier, you may not have the answer, but of those tests, do we have any numbers back in terms of, out of the tests that we're giving out? Because I know I saw where we asked them to, and I think that this is a good job on giving out the test, and also, I read the instructions where they asked them to test before going back to school. Do we have any idea what percentage of the tests, or not even percentage, but any numbers that came at positive?
So, great question, Mr. Tillman. So, we know currently of all the testing we've done over the past week, we're seeing about a 19% positivity rate of those tests that are returning. So, you know, 19 out of 100 students that did take the test and are reporting that back in are reporting positive cases.
And then, and how long do we ask them to quarantine?
So, it'll depend on their symptoms, date of onset of symptoms, or date of testing. But we're operating between five and 10 days, depending on the student, depending on the symptoms that they're having, and also testing.
All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome, sir.
Oh, Mr. Rosales Medina?
I was, I have other questions, but I'll just address this one only because of the question Mr. Tillman just asked with regarding the cases. I'm curious to find out, because I know I got COVID, and you said five days. I wasn't able to test negative until the 11th day. So, are you saying that are we, are we having students come back to the school district, not even doing the test to show that they're negative?
No, Ms. Rosales Medina, and actually, on the next slide, I go into a little more detail on the new K-12 guidelines, as well as the CAL OSHA guidelines, which may provide some more clarity on the changing timeline.
Yeah, that's because you said five days, and so that was kind of alerted me. Okay, I'll wait for your next pres, next slide.
Mr. Vitier and Dr. Rodriguez and Ms. Irvin, I got a lot of alerts today that we could order, anybody could order four test kits free of charge to, are we sending that information out, I hope, to our families? We are? Okay, okay, good. And, and secondly, I've gotten concerns about our, our website not being up to date. And I'm just wondering if that's true or not, or who's in charge of it? Because the numbers don't match. Parents are concerned that the, the numbers are not equivalent to what they know about their schools.
Right, so, the COVID dashboard last update was on the 14th, which was last week. And so, on, I believe it was Friday. So, they are not up to date. That number is not up to date because of the surge in cases. They are doing more of the call-outs and trying to do contract tracing, so there is a delay in the reporting from the COVID liaison to the actual person that inputs that data. So, they are lagging.
Is that also true about our employees?
I do believe so.
Because of the delay?
Because of the delay. The volume of tests that are given right now is, has been off the charts.
So, that's why there's a delay? So, our, our, our community needs to know that. That's why, okay, our employees as well as our parents. Okay, thank you.
Excuse me, also, Dr. Flores, I do know that it only updates on school days, and so, we just came back from a weekend, so today would be the next update, and it would probably update tomorrow.
It only updates on Tuesday?
It only updates on school days.
Oh, school days.
So, you only report on the school days, so.
Is that daily?
Yes, you get an update every day, and I believe that today's update would be in tomorrow.
Okay, okay, just, just wondering, because they're asking me. Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, Dr. Flores, just to echo what the team's saying, there's about a two-day lag. We know with the, with the county dashboard, there's actually a seven-day lag in COVID numbers. We've, we've been able to get it down to two school days. So, you'll be seeing, for example, today was our first day back this week, so you'll be seeing today's numbers. Anything that happened in the district today, you'll see that reflected on Thursday. So, there's about a two-day lag.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vitier. We have folks, board, and members, we have about five more information slides. So, if we can make it through that and ask the questions at the end, that'd be greatly appreciated. Thank you. Mr. Vitier?
Thanks, David. If you can go to the employee guidance update slide for me. So, CAL OSHA, which focuses on employee safety, updated guidance four days ago on January 14th. So, this now allows employees who are out with COVID to return to work after day five if they have no symptoms and if they test negative. So, no symptoms, test negative. The new guidance also allows vaccinated employees, who are simply close contacts, to remain at work as long as they agree to test and they remain symptom-free. So, this change will significantly reduce the time employees need to be off work unless they are experiencing COVID-like symptoms. The California Department of Public Health also released new K-12, so schools, guidance last Thursday. It places a greater emphasis on testing everyone in a shared airspace instead of the six-foot rule, and not specifically identifying close contacts. So, if you have a positive case in a classroom, offering testing and providing testing and monitoring for symptoms for everyone in that classroom is their new recommendation. This will also allow more students to safely remain in school so long as that they are asymptomatic and they agree to test. So, our AM clinical teams are still reviewing the guidance. There's some clarifying questions that they have for the state of California and also our public health department, so we have not implemented that yet. We still believe currently, as we're managing the surge, that we're best to stay with the current guidance. Right now, it's, it's safer for our schools and the community. And Dr. Rodriguez and Dr. Funchess will now go into a bit more detail as it relates to staff and student attendance.
Great, thank you, Eric. Next slide, please. So, we want to give you a current state of what COVID in the winter surge looks like for our students and our staff. Next slide, please. So, as you can see, the student absences, this information was provided in the Friday update. I did provide you a full report of raw data for, again, transparency so that you could see each school, as well as the cumulative for each of the levels. As you can see, we had on Monday, as we, students returned back to school, we had over 8,000 students who were absent. As we looked at the equivalent of pre-COVID comparison, we had 2,400 students absent. Now, this takes into account all absences. Could be COVID-related, could be that they were just sick. It could be that they had a doctor's appointment. We wanted to make sure that we were comparing apples to apples as far as attendance. And so, that is, those are the numbers that we're seeing now. As you can see that there is a, the, the numbers are greater at our elementary schools, and we understand that our parents are having some reservations and having some concerns about safety as they're having their children go to school. And so, that's where we're seeing our increases of, of student absences. Next slide, please. Oh, actually, go back. I just want to make sure that we're clear. Now, you'll see on the asterisk at the bottom where it says estimated plus or minus four to 12 students, and that is at the total. If you add them all up, you're not going to get that number. And the reason for that is because we do have students who are at the continuation schools. You have high school kids who might come to three or four periods, so the numbers are not going to add up totally. And that's because we have percentages of days for the students at the high school. I wanted to be, just make sure that you have that information. Next slide, please, and I'll pass it over now to Dr. Funchess.
Thank you, Dr. Rodriguez. And board, I'd like to give you an update on how increased COVID testing and the increase in access to testing has impacted staff absences as well as exposures and positive cases. So, as we return from the holiday break on January 10, 2022, the first-day certificated employees, 515 were out absent. Now, these include long-term absences, illness, and any call-offs. Tuesday, 519, Wednesday, 553, and so on. Thursday and Friday, up to 598. And typically, there's an average daily absence for certificated employees of 200 to 250, just depending on the time of year. But we did see an increase in employee absences in terms of certificated staff the first week back. And then on down to classified as well, as you see, the average daily absence is anywhere between 150 and 200, and in, in normal times. But right now, in this surge, 346, 361, on down to Friday, 359. And so, with staff absences, it is our job as a district, or our goal, to make sure that we're keeping our school sites and our district operating. So, I wanted to move into the next sequence or the next, I wanted to segue into the next piece about our contingency plan. As the state of California and the CDE has given us guidance on what would need to happen should we have, should we not have enough staff to cover schools? And there are three areas that I'd like to bring to your attention before I go into our contingency plan. In order for a school or school district to consider closures, a couple of things would need to happen. We need to be unable to provide in-person learning due to staff shortages. That's what we'd have to be unable to provide. And we'd have to make sure that on the certificated side, we've exhausted all means of providing staffing for in-person learning, working with our county office as well as CDE. And then on the classified side as well, exhausting all means to provide in-person learning, working with our county office and the California Department of Education. So, I'd like to take this moment to thank everyone here, our managers, our staff, our personnel on both the certificated and classified side. We put a plan in place called all, basically, all hands on deck. All available staff be ready to support as we experience high volumes of absenteeism or absences due to COVID-related factors. And so, it's a layered approach, as you can see there. And one of the things that we do, our day starts, our day starts now. We're looking at numbers now for tomorrow, or we're looking at numbers at the beginning of the week, throughout the week. And in the morning, we look at where our staff needs are. And so, our approach is making sure that we provide coverage at the school site, using our guest teachers at the school site, any available program facilitators, counselors, period coverage, which is in our contract, and other certificated staff. So, if we have a good number of staff that are out, we start with school site staff first and see how we can cover those absences there. And then, we also, in the HR department, working with Ed Services, Student Services, working with all our divisions and departments, we look at deploying program specialists, right? Program specialists that are outside of the classroom but still have credentials and can work with students, and we're doing that through equitable deployment. And I want to thank our district program specialists for doing such a great job covering on a daily basis as we call on them. We are also deploying district managers when needed. As some of our site administrators go out on COVID leave, we can cover with district managers, and we can also cover classrooms with district managers as well as needed. And cabinet is also willing to go out. We thought we would have to go out Friday, but we did not. But we are ready and willing to go out as well to cover those absences. And then finally, district from, a support from the district office for our classified employees or absences dealing with our classified staff. Some sites have severe absences in the front office, or maybe even custodial. We've deployed, working with our different divisions and departments, clerical staff out to sites, as well as MNO through, MNO has deployed custodians, and Human Resources has deployed substitute custodians as well. We've completed e-runs as well. So, it's a layered approach, all hands on deck. And all managers, all classified staff, all personnel from the certificated side that are available have lent their support to that. And we, we've been able to cover, and we haven't been, we haven't had school closures at this time.
Next slide, please.
President Wyatt?
Want to have a question on that?
Yeah. Before we see the video.
Because I think the last slide's a video, right? Yes? Okay, let's go ahead and do some questions.
Can we pass on the video?
It happened?
Let's do the questions first.
Dr. Funchess, it looks like a well-laid-out plan in terms of, you know, given, I'm glad to hear that if we don't have coverage or so many people are out and so forth, that we will go to remote or whatever closure. When you say closure, do you mean remote?
Yeah, meaning closing schools down and going into some type of remote learning.
Because I know Culver City Unified, I think it's closed down for a couple of weeks, you know, so that all the sickness would be gone or whatever it is, right? So, and I understand it'll be classroom by classroom or school by school?
As a district, what we'd have to do is determine that we can't cover classrooms or we can't provide for in-person learning. So, we feel as a district, that would be school by school at this time.
School by school? Okay, good. And then, I do know that high school teachers are covering other absences during their preps. Are, are they getting compensated for that?
They are getting compensated according to the collective bargaining agreement, and we just signed an agreement with SBTA to double that amount for those classroom teachers that are covering during their prep periods.
And then, what about the program facilitators? Do they get compensated or, because they're not able to do their work, right? So, they're, they're subbing? So they're subbing, correct?
But at our school sites, what's happening, the program facilitators at the school sites can also be compensated now based on covering at the school site, but district.
At the school sites?
Yeah, correct.
The ones that are the district, no?
The ones that are the district, they're being called upon when needed. So, and we're deploying equitable deployment practices.
And they're not compensated?
We're not providing extra compensation at this time for them.
Okay. So my concern also is about, because of all of this movement, they're not able to really do their work. So their hands on deck means they're, they're just covering, right? For the time being and, and so their work, they're not having to do their work on top of this.
Here's what we're trying to do to address that, Dr. Flores. We're providing equitable deployment and asking managers to give those employees grace and give them time to get other work done should they not be able to do that because they are covered.
Fair to, you know, punish them for.
Of course.
Yeah, okay.
We agree.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, Dr. Rogers, thank you, Dr. Flores.
Eric, I don't know if Mr. Vater is still on. This was, this came up in my mind when he was, hey there, I see you now. Just quick, just quick question about, I know you have the protocols kind of laid out there for the parents, but do they, is there something that's showing them what the symptoms are? Do we have something that says these are the symptoms that they refer to now that, you know, it's been a few adjustments on the quarantine time? But, you know, do they know or are we making sure that they know what a symptom is?
Yeah, we do. And working with Ginger's team and communications, just really going back to our messaging, you know, we know that we need to say stuff multiple times as we work through the pandemic. You know, as it, the wave goes down and then it comes back up. And so we need to re-message those things. So we are working to make sure that our families know what the symptoms are, what to do when they have the symptoms and who to report it to at the school site. So it's just that constant messaging.
Great, perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Rogers. Ms. Rosales Medina?
Yes, thank you definitely for the presentation. This was very helpful. I did notice though, I think it was in, it's the COVID-19 areas, cases. Our areas, meaning with San Bernardino County, with school district, Highland and so forth. I wish there was a way where I could see, and maybe you have the data, the raw data right now, for January the 2nd, all the way to as far as you can now. Because I was, I know for a fact that it probably increased a lot after this, these numbers that you just presented. So I would like to see that. Do you have the numbers?
You can see that www.sbccounty19.com. And then go to the dashboard. www.sbccounty19, that's all one word, dot com. Scroll down, there's a part that says dashboard. And you can click on cases and you'll see the spike. Because you're, what you're saying is absolutely right, Dr.
I'm saying that is because, I mean, I mean, even if it was for the presentation, it would have been good that he would have just added into this, just so we can have it. Because it, it would just show, I mean, what were we, were we really prepared? Because maybe, basically, we're coming back to school and honestly, it's just been spreading like wildfire. Everybody coming back from their vacation time. And yeah, just spreading it. So I'm wondering how that might have impacted with the school district? Because in the data that shows later on, and I thank you for the, for the student absences as well as the staff absences, the staff absences, thank you, Dr. Funches, with regards to, we have, we see January the 12th, January the 13th, 14th, and you actually see that there's an increase of cases? But I'm wondering, Dr. Rodriguez, with regards to those dates for our students, I imagine those cases increased? Because I don't see it in here, the January the 12th, 13th, the 14th?
That's on our own dashboard too, you know that, right?
But this is for students, these are.
Yeah, I'm saying if you go to our sbcusd.com and scroll down to the COVID dashboard for the school district, those numbers are there. So like today, you see where Aurora Valley had 20 combined. I think it was like 10 teachers and 10 students. They do a good job of showing that.
Would have been helpful, but I can go on my phone and then just ask really quickly the questions.
That's for parents too, they can see it.
Okay, that's good for those that are home. I just wish it would have been easier just for me. Otherwise, I'll look right now and I see that maybe someone might have some questions. In the meantime, I'll come back to it.
So, so to provide you that information, in that Friday update, we provided you the dates of all week of the student attendance of last week. What we did here, as we were working on it, we wanted to give you context to have comparisons around what it looked like before winter break, what it looked like around Thanksgiving break, and then what it looked like before even, before COVID started. So we were looking at is the comparison so that you would have a better idea of the increase and what that looked like. But all the other data that, as far as the attendance data for last week, day by day, we included in the Friday update for you.
And Ms. Rosales Medina, you're absolutely correct. The numbers are higher if you, the closer you get to today. But the place that we pull the data from, that Mr. Tillman referenced from the county website, has a 14-day lag period. So the data point that we were able to pull from was the beginning of January. But you're absolutely correct. If we could pull real-time data from the county website, you would see a significant rise in cases.
Okay, I have, I know I have another question, hold on one second. And I do want to say that, say that I did notice that they have to also test negative for staff. The same thing goes for students?
That is, that is correct.
So they have to test negative in order to attend school, okay. Make sure I have nothing else, yes I do. So as we're, as, and this would be for Dr. Funches, with all hands on deck approach for the school site staff and how they're trying to address when there's a large shortage of teachers or absences and students. So what is the turnaround rate? Meaning, you know, by the time you find out this person's not going to, teacher's not going to be in the classroom, how long will it take for someone to go to the class?
So it just depends. Our morning starts, like I said, it starts now, right? We're looking at those numbers now. And we were looking at them today. We want to deploy teachers by at least 8:30, right? Because school starts for elementary at 8:50 and secondary around 7:30, 7:25, something around that, around that time. We like to get everyone deployed out by 8:30 a.m. Does it happen all the time? It happens most of the time. But I get an update from my director, Ms. Deion Clark, around 9:00 and 9:30. And all sites are now covered either with guest teachers, even some principals, right? So I want to thank our principals as well, program specialists. So to answer your question more fully, by 9:30, things are fully covered. That's our goal, but we want, we like to get them covered by 8:30.
And then also another question for that is, how are, you know, the intention for us not to close the school sites, the campuses, I mean, even the school district, is because we want to make sure they're in classroom learning, right? That's what I'm assuming. But the reality is, and we have to really ask ourselves, are they really learning in these environments where someone just pops in in the classroom? And the teacher might have, might have not felt so bad because with COVID, with this Omicron, with this new variant, there's several people that kind of tease the name of it. So I keep, have to make sure I don't say the wrong one. Is that, it's, you can, one day and the next day, you feel really sick. And so it can, it can happen. So I imagine teachers the same way are missing. They probably have what they're doing in the classroom and all of a sudden they're gone and they're not feeling well. Then the person taking over is now kind of, and it's no, no, it's not their fault. But now what are they really teaching the students? Are the students really learning? I think that's what the whole point is.
Thank you, Mrs. Medina. I'll answer that this way. We as a district feel like our students do better when they're in person, meaning they're in an environment of learning, not just in the classroom, but socializing out there on the field, socializing throughout the campus. So having our scholars come to school, even if it's a guest educator or expert program specialist from the district office, is much better in our opinion to be in school than at home behind the computer. So that's, that's how we're addressing that right now. We're doing everything we can to keep our young people in, in person.
Okay, I know that the district, through the challenges of last year, I mean, we were able to make do with what we had, but I think we did a very good job. And it's no comparison to Virtual Academy because Virtual Academy has a completely different instruction. And so I know that if the case, I mean, look, I'm hoping that the cases will drop significantly, that we don't even have to consider it. But I'm glad that we're starting to prepare just in case that ever happens.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rosales Medina, Mr. Tillman.
You know, I really want to commend the district superintendent staff, teachers and classified employees for the job you guys have done. It's been amazing. And I think our district is unique because we've accepted the philosophy from the beginning that we want to allow people to have choices, right? So right now, because we offered the Virtual Academy, Ms. Medina, the folks who wanted their kids to be in a virtual setting, they are. And so the people that had a real concern in the beginning and because of their child's health concerns, we gave them options for that, right? And I think that's wonderful. We've been amazing to be able to maintain at the level that we have. So I want to ask like, what's the highest number of substitute teachers? Have we, I mean, what's the highest number of teachers that have been out sick since we come back for one day?
Classroom teachers, meaning those certificated staff needing subs, would be right at 489.
It's a lot. And then you only had how many substitutes that filled in, regular subs that filled those?
393 subs that filled in and the rest we covered.
And then that's when you had to use your other people on the all, the all hands on deck folks from the district to fill in the rest.
And period coverage as well.
Which is, which is pretty amazing. So, and that's not to say that if things got to another level, we might not have to, we might end up having to shut down a school or a classroom or something like that. But you're saying to this date, we haven't.
Right now, we have not done that. But we are prepared and talking through those pieces.
And that's good. So I think it's fortunate, because I will say this, Ms. Medina, to answer you, a question you asked. When you look at the studies that had taken place on sites that closed, there were a lot of issues with, and problems that students had to deal with. We know by the data that students are safer when they come to school. And some, some students more so than others. So it's, I think it's amazing that we're able to provide that solution. And I think it's the reason why so many of you teachers, administrators and classified employees bent over backwards to provide an educational environment for our students because we realize the service that we're providing and literally saving lives. So I appreciate it. I think the good thing to remember is because he had the vaccine, that you don't get as ill for the most part. But I don't lose sight of the fact that people are still dying. If you look on that county site, 19 people died from day before yesterday to today. Now they're saying a lot of those people who aren't vaccinated, but it's still sad, right? So I still encourage all our staff to get vaccinated. And I hope we're still giving, finding ways to help get vaccinated and doing a test. One other thing I want to end with, you know, because I, you know, tested positive a few weeks ago and then went the 10 days. We lose sight of the fact that one test doesn't get you very far. Right? Because you take the test to see if you have COVID. Say you test negative, so when are you going to test again? It's not over. And then when you test positive, you're supposed to wait to five or six days to test negative. They say you have to test negative. But you test negative, now you take, you test on the sixth day. If you still test positive, then you used up that test. And there's no guarantee you, on the, on the seventh day, you won't test negative. So then you have to find another test. So it's a lot harder than what they make it out to be. You need more than one test to really, if you're going to test positive at home and then find a way to test negative to come back. Because the one box of test doesn't do it. So I just want to commend folks on the work that you're doing. I read those numbers in the Friday update, but I wanted to say them in public so everyone realizes the work that you all are doing and answers the questions how we're doing it, right? But I just want to end with, I know it's not easy. I know it's a whole lot of stress on all the staff and the parents. You know, I kind of had a sense of relief after I got the virus and got through it. But while I had it and tested positive, I kept wondering to myself, is it going to get worse? Is it going to get worse? That's not a good feeling, that's a scary feeling, right? For those of you who have had it. And, and we know that for, for a lot of folks, it did get worse. I have a nephew who's 35 years old, he got it. He has blood clots in his lungs and scarred, scarred lung tissues. And he's, and he works for the school district and our cash program. And he's going to be off for four months, he has oxygen. It's sad, you know, so it's not benign for everyone. It really is something that we still have to worry about. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman, Dr. Daddy Rogers.
I just wanted to add on the symptoms. Putting that on the flyer would be also awesome. That way the students can get them. So that's one example of the flyers. Thank you.
Yes, because in reality, they don't get fevers. I know in my case, in some cases, they don't get fever. I didn't have a fever. I did have other complications, but I didn't get the fever. I guess my question is too, now that you mentioned Virtual Academy is, is there, is there still, is there a larger waiting list now that we've had more students? Because I honestly, I've heard from parents that don't want their kids to come into school because they're scared. There's, there's been teachers that I've heard that only had seven students in a classroom. And so, you know, the reality is, yes, I'm glad we're coming back to school, but you know, are, what are we doing to alleviate the issue that parents are not wanting to send their kids to school? So how is the academy working right now with this situation?
Well, the Virtual Academy does have an interest list at this time. We just came back from winter break. And so there has been some fluctuation as far as the enrollment. So students who are not making academic progress were dropped back to their homeschool. And that allowed new students to enroll. We still have an interest list, it's about 1,000 students right now. And so we'll work through that with Human Resources to provide additional resources as we can. But at this point in time, we're facing a reality of a surge. People are getting sick, lots of people are getting sick. Teachers are getting sick, parents are getting sick, students are getting sick. It's, it's not pretty. And so we have to just kind of, you know, be faithful and hope for the best and remain safe. We will continue to work on it.
I'm wondering, for all the absences that we're having, is, there has been any talks with regards, I guess with people's budget, of trying to reimburse in the future maybe for those absences? I don't even know, I know.
So, so currently, we're working on Saturday school. And so we do have Saturday school in the works. We're having some conversations around expanding the offerings of Saturday school, but we want to go through all of our respective parent committees and our student committee to get their input before we move forward with the additional offerings.
Alrighty, is, no other questions? I know we got a video coming up. I'm hoping it's like 10 seconds, but no, I'm just kidding. Let's go ahead and check out our video.
It's not very long, but I do want to thank our elementary instruction. We really want you to get a glimpse of what's going on in our classroom so that you can see that in fact, kids are learning. And we want to focus on showcasing our priorities and our academic areas of focus and our initiatives. So you'll be hearing some of that in our video. And thank you to Ms. Amy Coker and her Elementary Instruction Department.
Welcome to Elementary Instruction. My name is Amy Coker and I am the Director of Elementary Instruction. I'm very excited to share with you today some of the amazing work that's taking place in our department. Elementary Instruction works to provide the curriculum and instruction needs of both our site administrators, our teachers, but ultimately our students. Together, we work to provide the highest level of success for our scholars. This success is achieved through providing high-quality professional development, standards-aligned resources and outstanding customer service to both our students and our families. Thank you for taking the time so that we can share our collective work.
Elementary Instruction continuously strives to seek cutting-edge, research-based practices and vetted programs to share with stakeholders at all levels. Some of our programs we provide are Imagine Learning and Footsteps to Brilliance. These two programs accelerate learning utilizing current cognitive research, interactive platforms, multiculturalism, growth mindset, and provide a complete suite of adaptive digital curriculum and assessment solutions for pre-K to 12th grade students in language arts and math. Also, to ensure that we are continually providing additional, real-time instructional support for our teachers and scholars, we have created learning pathways that are aligned to our district's scope and sequence.
In the area of professional development, three of
In the area of professional development, three of our big initiatives to accelerate learning are Teacher Clarity, Universal Design for Learning, and Avid. Teacher Clarity ensures that instruction is organized and intentional while providing students with transparent expectations in knowing what they are learning, why they are learning it, and recognizing when they have learned it. Our goal is to support the implementation and regular practice of Teacher Clarity. Universal Design for Learning is an educational framework that guides the development of flexible learning environments that can accommodate individual learning differences.
Four groups because of, because the first factor.
As we begin to build our educators and administrators' capacity of Universal Design for Learning, we ultimately want to develop a shared understanding to support tiered instruction that will reach and teach all learners. Like the instructional approaches of Teacher Clarity and Universal Design for Learning, Avid prepares students for college and/or career. Avid's professional learning and curriculum is a student-centered approach. This approach increases student dialogue and critical thinking, leading to mastery learning. With guided, scaffolded support, educators can teach students how to master note-taking, studying, organizational skills, and other academic behaviors that will help them succeed in school and beyond. Three of our exemplary programs that support a well-rounded education for our students include the Visual and Performing Arts Program, Gifted and Talented Education Program, and Physical Education Program. As children participate in these programs, they discover the creativity within themselves, develop a vital means of expression, and harness skills that prepare them for college and/or career. Elementary Instruction believes that to truly assist our scholars in achieving lifelong success, we must build leadership and capacity by working directly with educators and administrators at the sites through coaching, modeling, and co-planning.
Here come the success criteria. So this is how we're going to know whether or not we met today's learning intentions. So we're thinking about how are we going to subtract within a thousand? So we're going to make a plan to solve problems, right? So remember, learning intention starts with.
Another way we build capacity at the sites is through our resident substitute program. In collaboration with human resources, this program provides professional development to resident guest teachers each week on early literacy and numeracy instructional practices that they can use during small group instruction. We are extremely thankful for the participation of all stakeholders in various professional development opportunities that we offer to our SBCUSD community. Elementary Instruction values and appreciates the partnerships within the district. Cross-departmental teaming not only provides new perspectives and innovation, it also aligns district initiatives, programs, projects, and professional development, making the work practical, relevant, and manageable for those we serve. Some of the joint projects led by our team include the Literacy Task Force and Making Sense of Mathematics Conference. Some of our partnerships include secondary education, multilingual, family engagement, employee development, community partners, and many others. We believe that with collaborative opportunities across the district, including professional learning, standards-aligned lesson design and delivery, and onsite coaching, that true collective efficacy will continue to move our staff and scholars towards achieving the highest levels of success.
I'm sure everybody would agree, I can't see that picture enough times of Dr. Hill. It's absolutely beautiful, so, love that picture. All righty, we are on eight point two, I believe. Oh, Dr. Flores, I'm sorry. I didn't.
I just wanted to thank our, thank Amy Coker and you, Anna, Mrs. Applegate. That was just terrific. That's just really visually and aesthetically conceptualize all the hard work that everybody's doing and just please let them know if they're not watching, they're probably asleep, but they did a great job.
And it is amazing what is going on in our classrooms despite this pandemic. So it is amazing to see.
Those are all mediated structures, those are like scaffolded, you know, teaching. I mean, you could see the complexity, the depth and complexity of it, so it's fabulous.
Thank you. I'll pass that on.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. All right, eight point two COVID-19 leave updates. Dr. Funches?
Thank you. Board, during our last board meeting, you asked me and our team to bring back information related to COVID-19 leave. And what I'd prepared, what we prepared for you tonight is just an overview of where we are now, and then give you some information, should we go back to the table and negotiate with our unions on the leave, as you know, leave and benefits and wages are associated with, they're negotiable items. So we'll present the information to you. I expect you to give us some input and have questions for us, and then we'll go work with our unions, and should that be the direction that you provide this evening? So, I'd like to start here, next slide, please. As you're familiar with, or may have been familiar with, Senate Bill ninety-five, or SB ninety-five, which provided ten days of leave for any COVID-related circumstances like illness, isolation, going to get vaccinated and such, here's what we've done since the expiration of that leave. Any in-district exposure, meaning through contact tracing, we've determined that it was an in-district exposure, then that paid leave is provided for the duration of that quarantine or illness. And if it was work-related, the employee has not been required to utilize their current or accrued sick leave and no loss of pay. And also, if it was an in-district exposure or illness, then workers' compensation procedures are adhered to just in case that illness or that exposure, that isolation goes further than those ten days, or however long it lasts. And then for out-of-district exposure, also determined through contact tracing, that's the system that we've been using as a district. Employees have been using their own sick leave as afforded to them by their own collective bargaining agreements, whether it be certificated or classified. And then also, labor relations and compliance have been working with employees to provide them direction on appropriate leave to take. So that's the system that we've been under since the expiration of SB ninety-five. We wanted to give you an update on the costs of going back and covering all leaves under COVID, should we go down that road. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Solins at this time.
Thank you, Dr. Funches. So next slide, please. So in reviewing the projected cost, if we were to go back to the negotiating table and extend the COVID leave, we went back and looked at the number of absences that were paid from an employee's leave, meaning the district did not pay for the period from when the leave provision expired through the end of December thirty-first, and we projected a cost of three hundred and twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and twenty-three dollars to cover those leaves for that period. And looking forward to project out the six period, or six months going forward, from January first through January, or June thirtieth, to take us through the remainder of the year, we reviewed and went back to the prior six-month period and estimated that cost would be approximately a million dollars, bringing the total cost to extend COVID leave at a projected one point three million dollars. It is important to note that we are in the middle of the Omicron variant, so we are seeing higher rates of absenteeism. And so these projections will change depending on where we see COVID progress and if there's any other outbreaks and variants that may emerge during this period that could increase our expenditures, or if we have less variants, less outbreaks going forward, that could also decrease those projections.
All righty, I think that was the presentation, right? Okay, we'll go to questions. We have Mr. Tillman, then Ms. Rosales Medina, then Dr. Flores.
So I'm assuming that you're looking for direction for the board? I'm assuming that we're looking for direction for the board to say yes or no?
I was bringing the board back the information.
Right, so I would like to look for consensus after you guys talk, that we move forward. Thank you.
No, not right now.
When I say move forward, you're asking for direction.
I can go back to the table and work with the unions on that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tillman, Ms. Rosales Medina.
Okay. No, I was wondering, for instance, when a student, when an employee or a teacher contracts it out of district through determined by contact tracing, can an employee put an appeal to that and then maybe have more evaluations? I'm just curious if that's, if that has been done because, you know, just to make sure that maybe they could say, no, what, you guys made a mistake, you guys didn't see that this, and then I'm wondering if there's an appeals process to that.
I wouldn't say necessarily a laid-out appeals process, but we have had case-by-case where the employee will reach out to affirmative action or employee relations, and we take another, a closer look at and examine it, examine the case and work with payroll, and we have made adjustments based on what we found.
Because this is impacting their pay or their, their time. So that's what I'm saying, I'm wondering if, you know, for those that are listening, if that's something that they even considered, having an appeals for those cases that they're saying no. And, you know, we know our employees are going to make mistakes, so that's something I'm looking at. And also, with regards to the cost and the total cost, as long as we're in schools, I think we're going to continue to incur costs. I just feel like that's, that's an obligation that I feel like I would have because now we're still putting individuals at risk. And because of that risk, then we're going to have to cover the cost. Unless we go to virtual, then we don't have to worry about that cost.
Thank you.
That's it.
All righty, thank you, Dr. Flores, and then Dr. Rogers after that.
Just to, just to clarify, so the next steps would be to bring, to agendize this for action? Is that what I heard you say?
No, not at all, so.
What's the next step?
Our SBTA union have, they've already engaged me in wanting to bargain what extending that COVID leave might look like.
Say that again. I'm so sorry, I don't have the hearing aids.
Our SBTA union have already engaged me in what extending the COVID leave might look like. They've already given me a proposal. I would just have to work with them there. And then I'd also engage CSCE so that we can also have an agreement.
Then, so then do we have to approve it or no?
So it will, it will definitely come back to the board because it's tied to money, if it's an MOU.
Okay. So I would prefer that we go back to the conditions or whatever the two unions say because just as Ms. Medina said, you know, it's really hard to show that you didn't get it, I mean, at school or wherever, and it doesn't even matter because it's airborne. And so we should provide a ten-day leave, you know, whether you get it, whether, and they don't have to prove that they got it here or outside. That's what, that's the way it was before. Correct?
Dr. Flores, yeah, I'll go back to the table and work with the unions on, on those things so that we can negotiate there.
And, and the ESER three, which I remember the amount, not the exact amount, was two hundred and sixty-two million dollars, and that was one of the, one of the conditions or one of the criteria that we were supposed to use the money for to compensate for leave because of COVID sickness. So I, I, I would want us to cover our employees' sick leave.
Thank you, Dr. Flores.
Yes.
Thank you, Dr. Flores, Dr. Rogers.
Just a continuation on that, so was that correct? I know, Dr. Flores, you asked a question, but my question was, is that funding available for that? The funding that we received around COVID? Just want to make sure.
So to answer that question, if you recall, the board approved an ESER three expenditure plan. So we would have to go back and identify some things that we wouldn't do and in lieu of this as a priority. And, and I would, I would also just add that there is some discussion at the governor's level that they may potentially have some extension of sick leave provision. So that may come back to us and some additional funding to support those costs.
Thank you for adding that, too, because again, I know we talk often to our legislators, and it's great that we have it to fix it, but we also need to remind them again, if this is something that's ongoing, this is a whole new variant, whole new issue that when they're, you know, looking at the budget, and I know Assemblymember reached out to us, so we just got to tell them what we need and what we're experiencing. The other thing, I think I heard, this is retro, right? Because it ended, it ended September the thirtieth, I think it was? So this would be retro for, for all that have used their funding or used their, their time?
Dr. Rogers, once we go back and get an agreement with the union, it would be our intent to take it back.
It's a retro.
Retro, yes.
And then lastly, will you be looking at the new five days or, you know, how, I guess you'll have to work through, at one time it was ten, and now it's five, so how will that be going through? But I'm sure you'll.
Thank you. Listening to the board feedback up here, we do what's in the best interest of, of the district, given the feedback that you've provided, and we work through the optimum number of days needed for an employee to get healthy and get better. So I just don't want to state a number here on the days because of negotiations, but I definitely heard the feedback that you provided for me.
Sounds good, thank you.
You're welcome.
All righty, thank you, Dr. Rogers. There are no other questions? Oh, Ms. Savios snuck in right at the last second there. Ms. Savios.
So just, just kind of to clarify, from my understanding, when you go back, Mr. Solins, and look at the SR three funds and see, you know, because I heard you say that there may be some things that, that we won't do, is it, will you provide that information to us before we make any decisions on whether we do want to move forward with, say, this particular, you know, item, we're putting this as priority over what? I would like to know that information in advance, I think.
We certainly can provide that information.
Okay, so just, just to make sure, we won't be making any decisions or moving forward with anything until we have that information. Got it?
All righty, thank you, Ms. Savios. Any other questions or concerns? All right, and just want to welcome everybody to Wednesday, just so you know, if you haven't checked your clock, we made it. All righty, moving forward, nine point one, and board member comments.
Eight point three, President Wyatt.
Oh, geez, I am so sorry. Let me put my glasses back on, that might help. Eight point three administrative report. Thank you, Mr. Tillman, Vice President Tillman. Administrative report, annual audited financial report for fiscal year 2020, 2021. Let's take a look, and that is.
So, Dr. Wyatt, if I may, so I'd like to bring Mr. Andrew Park from ID Valley, our third-party audit firm, who will present an overview of the 2020, 21 annual audited financial reports this evening.
Welcome, Mr. Park, and good morning. Thank you for hanging there.
I was going to actually say good evening, but then.
Yeah, we appreciate you hanging in there for us.
Oh, not at all, it's a pleasure. So it's a pleasure seeing the board for the first time. I mean, I'm sure it's a new face for you guys. So looking at the audit report, hopefully we have, we do have a copy of this available, and you've gone through it a couple of times. But, you know, let's, even before I present the results of the audit itself, let's talk about what I do for the board. So effectively, I work for the board, I report to the board. Unfortunately, I've spoken to Dr. Rogers this year. I only preface with the board maybe once a year around this time. However, just please keep in mind that I do work for the board and I report directly to the board. So what exactly am I auditing here? First and foremost, I am auditing the financial statements as of June thirty, 2021. Now, what exactly does that mean? That means I'm auditing, which if you could recall, back in September of last year, you were presented with unaudited actials. That information is initially unaudited. My job is to come in, audit the information, and technically, report back to the board. Now, I audit the financial statement, that's my primary responsibility. However, attached to that is also federal compliance and state compliance, okay? So without further ado, let's move on to the results of the audit for 2021 fiscal year. The fastest way to get an understanding of how the audit went is to refer to page one oh five of the audit report. Page one oh five is what we would call the summary of auditor's results. Now, if you refer to this page, you get a very, you know, bird's eye view of how the audit went. So even before I present what some, how the audit results went, I like to kind of just preface this with some of the technical terms that we use in, in the world of audit, okay? So when we conduct an audit, it's, it's an assurance, okay? And when we present an assurance, we do this in a varying level of opinion. Highest level of opinion being an unmodified opinion, followed by a qualified opinion, and lastly, a disclaimer or an adverse opinion, okay? So on page one oh five, you're going to see three bold-faced sections, beginning with financial. So on page 105, you're going to see three bold-faced sections, beginning with financial statements. So I'm just going to go through each of the sections one by one and just go over the results. As it relates to the financial statements as of June 30, 2021, our opinion, as it relates to financial statements, again, was unmodified. Okay? Again, the highest level of assurance. Now, San Bernardino City Unified School District being a governmental entity is what's, basically it's subject to a requirement called government auditing standards. Now, what that is, is basically independent auditors like myself have to report to the board in terms of any type of deficiency that we found with what we would technically call internal control. Now, what internal control basically is, is in layman's terms, is basically checks and balances. Okay? We're really answering the question of, if you process a dollar within a system of internal controls, especially for financial reporting, does that dollar get reported as a dollar on a, on a set of financial statements? We're technically answering that question. Again, we don't necessarily opine on the effectiveness of how that works, but we do, we are required to present any type of deficiencies. Now, just to kind of go through this really quickly again. As it relates to the internal controls, we did have a deficiency to report to the board. Hopefully you had an opportunity to review that deficiency. It's right behind the summary of auditor's results, beginning on page 106. Okay? Moving on to federal awards. Federal awards is basically a twofold audit. Okay? First, first and foremost is a compliance audit, right? We render an opinion as it relates to the district's compliance with some of these programs that we've tested. Now, to give you an idea in terms of what we tested during 2021, we tested the coronavirus relief funds. I'm sure you've heard this. We just had a discussion about ESER III funds. We actually tested ESER I and ESER II. And lastly, child and adult care funds. Now, what was the result as a result of the audit? Our opinion was unmodified as it relates to the audit of these three large programs in the current year. Okay? We also did not identify any type of deficiencies as it relates to the checks and balances that are in place to ensure compliance with these three programs. Okay? Let's see. And then lastly, state compliance. Basically, on an annual basis, there's a set list of programs that the state controller's office, in conjunction with California Department of Education, pushes out and requires independent auditors like myself to review and audit and report back to the board. There's a comprehensive list of all these programs on page, let's see here. Page 103 of the audit report. Now, 2021 was a unique year. Due to pandemic operating conditions, state effectively reduced the requirements or the number of programs that were required to test by almost half and placed an emphasis on distance learning, or we call this the alternative attendance. But there was a heavy emphasis on distance learning. Okay? And, I mean, I have to tell you, the volume of documents that we were required to look at under distance learning was tremendous. And, you know, you gain a different level of respect for teachers when you have to prepare all these documents. It, it was, it was extraordinary. This is the 17th year that I'm auditing school districts because I've never seen anything like this. Without further ado, what was the result of the audit? So for the fiscal year of 2021, our opinion was unmodified as it relates to the district's compliance with state requirements that were mandated. Okay? That pretty much concludes my presentation and overall summary of the audit. Okay?
All righty, thank you. And I believe we have some questions here for you. And we'll start with Dr. Flores and go to Mr. Tillman.
Thank you for all your work. It's a tremendous amount, I know. On page 30, could you explain to me that paragraph on inter-fund balances? Because I, I'm, do you want me to tell you what I think it means?
Sure.
I've been a board member for quite a while, about 14 years. And inter-fund balances have always been reported. And we've been able to track them. And also, it's the board that approves inter-fund transfers, correct? Before they can be transferred. And so I'm interpreting this as that we don't have to show where those inter-fund transfers went or if they were paid for. Or how is, because it says.
I think what this is, you know, so, so governmental financial statements are extremely confusing. So what this is referring to is basically the elimination of some of these activities on what we would call a government-wide statement. So if you, Dr. Flores, if you go back to the unaudited actials, okay, all those inter-fund transactions are presented there.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
But it.
And, and, you know, it's, it's extremely confusing because you got one set of statements representing unaudited actials. And then basically what that represents is, these are your current results. We only talk about current results in that set of statements. And then what we do is basically we mimic the private industry and we convert that to a long-term information. So for instance, you know, you got items like pension. On a fund-level statement or the unaudited actials, you don't see pension as a liability there because it's really a long-term item. So we have one set here, which we convert into what we would mirror a, a, a private industry, if you will. So it's a different set of financial statements. So as it relates to that statement that mirrors the private industry, we eliminate the internal activities because effectively what that does is, it'll show, okay, you owe me this amount, and then you have to pay this amount. So you have what we would call a receivable and a payable. Right?
Right.
Now, if you were to present the entity as a whole, you can't really owe each other, right? So that transaction is eliminated so that folks outside that actually understand the whole government-wide statement, they have a better understanding in terms of what the true numbers are.
But we still see it. We as a board still see the, the payment, the repayment of the inter-fund transfer and so forth.
Yes, it is still available in the statements.
So this is just very confusing. Okay?
It's very confusing. I mean, again, just, just to kind of give you an idea, in terms of the document itself, this is a technical document.
Okay, thank you.
You almost have to be a CPA to understand this.
All right, thank you so much.
Dr. Flores, Mr. Tillman.
So on page 18, this is a, maybe a question for Mr. Solon also. So it shows that the, and, and this is the audited, this is the audited any fund balance, right? So the $138 million any balance, is that for restricted and unrestricted?
Yes, sir.
Combined. And, Mr. Solon, do you know what the, when we did the original budget, what the projected any balance was?
I believe it was, I, I double-checked, but I believe it's about 50 million. Yeah.
So I, I just saying that to illustrate that because of the, all the new money that we got in, that this is a lot better off than we were at the start of that budget cycle. And a lot of the numbers we talked about in terms of the deficit kind of went away because of that additional money that we received. So we're, we really got lucky because of the additional funding that we received because of the COVID. And it really got us out of a tight bind that we were in. And so I, I think it's important too, because when you look at a million dollars for something like this, Ms. Abios, then I don't, I don't have the concern about seeing where it's going to come from because it's showing here that you ended up with more money that was unspent. And this is the actual number. Before that, you get either the projected number or the unaudited actual. This is great because it's the actual number. And, and just to be clear, and you can tell me if I'm wrong, this is the only time we really know much money you really had, right? Because you guys are looking at June 30 as the cutoff. You look at all the revenues we took in and all the expenditures, even the ones that were encumbered. You had enough time now because it's passed to say, okay, as of June 30, here's how much money the district had left over. And this is the number, right?
That's correct.
Yeah. So it's easy for me when I see a number like that to say, we can afford to spend the $1.3 million to do the COVID extension.
Mr. Tillman, if I may, there's, there's one exception to that number.
All right.
So again, I'm, I'm going to get a little tech, technical, but then there's a financial reporting requirement where your Fund 14, and I'm trying to look for the balance right now. Your Fund 14, for the sake of financial reporting, because that's where we focus on, it gets consolidated and reported together as general fund.
Okay.
That's an accounting requirement. So let me just find this.
When it's like 1 million something? That's the.
Let me just really quickly find it here. $1.6 million.
That's what I thought, yeah.
Yeah, so it's still in the same ballpark.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman. Any other questions? All righty, and I, I do believe this is an action item. Ms. Abigail Rosas.
It's moved.
Stepped away real quick.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and properly seconded. Any other discussion?
No, thank you for a good report.
Mr. Park, thank you so much again for your patience as well.
Not a problem. Thank you very much.
Quite, quite the lengthy report, too. It's a lot of work. Thank you. Yeah, and for staying up.
Thank you.
So it's been moved and properly seconded. There is no other further discussion. We'll go ahead and vote? I apologize. Can't, oh, there we go. I was going to say I can't see the screen. All right, motion carries. So now we will move on to 9.1, Board Member Comments. And I will start to my right, Dr. Rogers, with you. And then actually after this week, we'll kind of rotate around.
All right, thank you.
Next person will be Ms. Medina first next.
Okay, thank you, President Wyatt. And I just want to say, it truly was an honor tonight to read the resolution for the life of Dr. Hill. It's been somewhat challenging, as you all know, but I, I do want to report that just working with her family and, and trying to help them navigate because, as you know, many of her family members are back east and limited family here. But it is all coming together and, and certainly she was beloved. I'll get a chance to go to the city council meeting tomorrow where they are doing the proclamation for Margaret Hill Day. So there will actually be that. And so we're really excited about that. And we'll be able to. Seven. And we'll be able to further proclaim that on this coming Saturday. And the links and things have went out. We were hoping to be able to livestream the larger event. However, it will be done safely as well there at the 66ers. But the private service also is going to be able to be livestreamed for, for those. So it's on the social media and hopefully it's been shared. And the, the family is, was very, very happy about tonight. And as you know, there's been a, a number of, of memorial services that have been taking place. We were able actually to do the coffee with the community, and that was very touching. And so we just appreciate, I continue to solicit your prayers for the family and for even her, her niece that was here tonight also lost another loved one. So there's been a lot of losses, but they are definitely working together and very just appreciative to the district and to the community. Has just really been coming together and is just, you know, it's, it's something to behold. So thank you again to the district for, for the light and for the, just the entire services, ginger and staff. That was just absolutely touching. And I was glad they were able to be here to, to witness it and, and just to view everything. So appreciate you all. And then lastly, I just want to say that we know that, and I think we're all getting it. There is fake emails going around requesting, I mean, Dr. Wyatt, I'm getting them on, from, on behalf of you. But I just want to say to the public and to anyone, if someone, if the board member is reaching out to you for money, you know that's not true. Please don't put your money up. And so many people are doing it because they're not sure. They're, they think it's coming from one of us. And I know Mr. Tillman used to every other week get one from me, and now I'm getting them from Dr. Wyatt. And I know Abigail was getting them before. And then they're even making fake accounts for Dr. Hill. So just, just be mindful of those things. And thank you all again. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rogers. Ms. Abigail Rosas. Medina?
Board comments, right?
Yes, ma'am.
I have several items. One I want to talk, I know we had presentations regarding our guest teachers. But I also want to look at, and I think I spoke to one a few days ago that he mentioned that he would love an opportunity to go into teaching. So I'm wondering, what are we offering our guest teachers? As well as, you know, guest teachers period for right now, the opportunity to go into teaching? Do we have like a pipeline that helps support them?
We do. We have ongoing training for them in conjunction with Ed Services. And every year, our guest teachers are the ones we reach out to first. When we are planning our recruitment fairs, we give them the information first. And we would love to make sure that they are prioritized within that recruitment process. And most of the time, we advertise that as well. And if that individual wants any more information, reach out to Carmen Oco, Ms. Dion Clark, and we'll give them that information. But yes, there is a pipeline there that we've been, yeah, there's a pipeline.
And I, and also with regards to each school site, just to clarify, does each school site have a guest teacher?
So each school site has the ability to have resident guest educators?
Oh, I'm sorry, residents, yes.
Yes, using their budget right now. I don't have the list in front of me, Mrs. Medina, but I can say that the majority of sites has, have a residence of assigned to them, or several.
And I know I've already requested this with you. We'll have a conversation regarding the demographics of employees, so I'll talk to you that, about that later. And I think that's it for right now, other than just saying, you know, I've had a few calls from individuals that want to learn more about Dr. Hill. And, you know, each of us have been touched in different ways. I know for me, I saw her as one of those strong women that, you know, she never gave up. She never gave up. And I just wanted to share that piece, that she was this extremely strong woman. And she was very vocal and made sure that whatever issues she knew was right, she would fight for them. So just wanted to say that we'd definitely be missing her.
Next, okay, okay.
All right, Dr. Flores, I thought, Mrs. Medina said she had a lot, but that was pretty good, Mrs. Medina. Good job. Pardon me?
Were you taking a nap?
No, I was actually reminiscing about Dr. Hill and.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
So I kind of was just visualizing, to be honest with you.
I, I know that Dr. Hill was an incredible leader and a, and a, how would you say, a pioneer. One of my good friends, Dr. Bobby Chappell, told me stories where, you know, this particular district a long time ago would not employ black or Latino teachers. And so there was a lawsuit. And she was, she was, you know, one of the first African-American teachers to, to be hired. And, you know, she forged the way for, for equity among, you know, getting, you know, representing our African-American community as teachers. And we still have a long way to go in terms of hiring and also building our, our teachers of color in our district. But I do remember her in that way and in many other ways as well. So she will be missed. I wanted to just share with the U-Board that I remember that Superintendent Thurman appointed me as one of the co-chairs of the California Literacy-Bi-Literacy Task Force. We finished our, our task. We had five committees, Communication and Campaign Committee, the Bright Spots Professional Learning Committee, Family and Community Literacy Task, Task Force or Working Group, Earliest Learners, and then the Bi-Literacy Multilingual Working Group. And I was, led that. I was co-chair of that. And last Friday, we had a, a final meeting where all the working, working groups presented their recommendations. And it's focused on literacy and bi-literacy for the state in terms of legislation. And Assembly Member Mia Bonta will be carrying and sponsoring that legislation. I want to commend us because we're on point in terms of our literacy and beginning literacy development and across the district. We're way ahead of the game, and I hope we get some of those funds to enhance our efforts. But, and of course, I mentioned that, you know, always in whenever I made a statement. Secondly, I've been asked to participate in the Association of Latino Administrative Superintendents. They're forming a few committees nationwide, and I will be representing, I hope, hopefully, they asked me to apply for the Policy Committee addressing needs, and they wanted a school board member's perspective, so I said yes. And then lastly, I enjoyed attending the D-LAC meeting the other day. It was, you know, they work really hard and they do really good stuff, and I just appreciate all the work that they do, they volunteer, they, you know, are advocates, and as you saw tonight with Mrs. Loera and Senora Felix as well. They're just, you know, great leaders, community leaders, and represent our parents as well. Anyway, I just, that's all. And I want to, you know, wish every, I know all our employees are struggling. Cabinet, appreciate you, you guys, I don't even know if you sleep, but you guys are doing phenomenal. I mean, everybody's anxious, parents, kids, teachers, our employees. I just want them to know that, just to hang in there, and, you know, we support you, period. And we care for you very much, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Flores, Mr. Tillman?
Thank you very much, and I want to thank the superintendent and administrators and district staff that have done such a great job, even on the website of honoring Dr. Hill. You know, when I ran for school board 27 years ago, she's one of the first people to endorse me. And I was blessed to be a board member while she was still principal of San Andreas. And to me, that was her greatest time, because the students and staff and faculty loved her. She saved a lot of lives at San Andreas and helped make a lot of kids successful, and never stopped giving back and keeping in touch with those students. And although me and Dr. Hill would go back and forth on the dais, she never stopped loving me, and I never stopped loving her. And if you look at the texts that we exchanged between each other, it was always after a board meeting, it was always with love. So she's going to be greatly missed, and there's no way we can replace her. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman. Ms. Sabios?
So, you know, just kind of similar to some of the comments that have already been made in regards to Dr. Hill, I didn't have the pleasure to have, you know, known her for years and years and years, but I, you know, I got to know her on my time on the board, she was here, and in that very short amount of time, even though she didn't know me and I didn't know her, she, you know, supported, you know, my efforts as a new board member, and so even till the last meeting. So I feel very, very blessed to have, to have had the privilege to meet her and have served alongside her even for that short period of time. I also want to thank everyone for the effort and the, you know, just continued nonstop going, keeping the district up and running. It is extremely difficult everywhere. Employees are tired, staff is tired, and, you know, mentally, physically just drained. And I hope that, that we as a board are, you know, and admin, I don't know if there's a way that maybe we can, you know, take some busy work off of, you know, teachers' plates. I don't know if that's something that we've looked at, or, you know, just allowing them to really focus on just connecting with students in the classroom rather than, you know, all of the other things that usually come with filling out paperwork and paperwork and paperwork on top of paperwork. And so I don't know what the, the ability for us to do that, but I think that if we can relieve some of that pressure off of them and, you know, allow them to really focus on providing the students that emotional support would be, would go a long way for everyone. So if that's a possibility, I don't know what that would look like, but I would highly encourage, you know, the district to look into that. And then also really just be very mindful of trying to raise morale, you know, amongst each other, just because again, it's very difficult times, sometimes we just forget. We get so consumed, and I think that we need, we need that more than ever now. And I think that was pretty much it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sabios, and all in our board comments. Whew, it's so much love in this building, in this community, in this city for Dr. Hill, and I have so many memories of her that, one I appreciate, and I'm just so fortunate to have, you know, and I'll carry those with me every day for the rest of my life. You know, she opened so many doors for me when so many doors were slammed shut on different boards and different committees that I may have never had the opportunity to be on. You know, when you talk about folks that transcend racial boundaries and gender boundaries, you know, and her life story, I mean, she's a pioneer in that and definitely in our city, and I'm eternally grateful for the opportunity she's given me. And I would not be in this seat today if it wasn't for her, I could assure you of that. So, you know, like all of us, I will miss her every day. And the great thing is, though, is that we know her love will live on. This community room, this boardroom is, like I told folks, the nicest you'll see in any district in our county, I can assure you of that. So it honors her in every way possible, and the work we do in this room has to honor it as we move forward every day as well. So that, to me, is the importance of what we do up here, and, you know, and what it means to carry her name. So I'll move on as part of that. Part of that work, you know, we heard a member from the community come today, and I've heard other members from the community come today and say, the district and the city needs to work together. And I know we've offered the olive branch, so, you know, I'm gonna take a step further and say, alright, Karen, I'm not sure who needs to set up that meeting, but sometimes we need to initiate and reach out and set up that meeting ourselves, which is the Bridge Committee, we've talked about too many times. So we need to take action and reach our hand out and say, let's make this meeting happen. And that's what we're going to do. I also had Karen provide us a copy of the Roberts Rules of Orders, and there's a lot of copies out there, because myself and Dr. Rogers have a conversation about a substitute motion, and I had never heard of a substitute motion, just so you know. Or there's also another word for it, I believe, which is, what's the word they use in here? Subsidiary motion. So there's a couple of different types of motions that can be made off of the main motion, which I learned a lot about that, so I recommend you take a look at that and read it, because quite honestly, I didn't know about that, and I learned something new because of a question that came up. And so I appreciate that, Dr. Rogers, and, you know, I know you don't have enough to read already, but here's a couple of other things you can take a look at and just learn Roberts Rules of Order to a deeper depth, because, boy, it's complex when you really get to look at it. I think we just scratched the surface for it. I want to thank Executive Cabinet and the other folks over there for strategic planning. I was very fortunate to get to participate in some strategic planning and looking at our multi-tiered system support service delivery model, and was really, really beyond impressed, one with the magnitude of work that's been done and the depth and breadth and level of expertise and professionalism that was in that room. Wow, you talk about a major think tank and just the depth of knowledge there, and also not, just to take that knowledge and develop it into a plan, a sequential plan and multi-year plan is impressive. I've been a part of strategic planning at a couple of different levels, and I'll tell you, that's at the highest level I've seen, and so my compliments to the team there. So I'd thank the Wellness Planning Committee as well, and I got to be there briefly, and my colleagues were there as well, I think it was Abigail Barber and Gwen, right, were there. So, you know, tremendous support from this board for the wellness that we're moving, and the wellness facilities and sites that we want to see happen in this city and for our students and our families in this community. So I love the support behind it, I'm looking forward to those ideas coming to fruition, those sites coming to fruition, it will happen, which is exciting. And so, you know, just thank you to my colleagues and those of you that are working on that as well, because that's been a long time coming, and Doc, I know your vision as well, you know, thank God you had experience in that in your two districts and bringing that here and making that happen, so I appreciate that. Huge thank you to all of our staff for helping us get through this pandemic. I know we've probably said it before, but I don't think we could say it enough. I mean, it is now closing on 12:40, and we still have time to go, and we're here going strong. And, you know, that level of dedication, I don't want to go, you know, without being appreciated. Because I don't know why, I don't know if it was the Red Bull I drank, and the coffee and tea or whatever the heck, I was like, because I feel like I could work till tomorrow morning. Not that I want to keep us till 5:00 in the morning, but I'm just highly motivated right now, really am. And I think it's just because of us and the work, and talking about Dr. Hill, just all that motivates me to work even harder. I told Danny, I said, Danny, I know you are too, we're machines, we really are. For us to be here at this time of night and still going strong and still thinking, you know, at the top of our game, my compliments to all of you. So thank you to everyone for getting us through this and continuing to get us through this, and will get us through this the rest of the year. And I believe that is it. Karen, you didn't turn on the timer on me, I was actually watching, so I wanted to make sure I stay within my five minutes. But I will pass it on now, 9.2 Superintendent Staff, Mr. Irvin?
Yeah, just real briefly, I just wanted to say, I echo everything that everyone said today about Dr. Hill. She definitely was an educational pioneer, and most importantly, from all my conversations I had with her from the beginning of my tenure until now, she always talked about making decisions in the best interest of kids, and I always appreciate that. And I did talk with her probably three to four days a week. She always either checked in or I checked in with her, and so we always had good conversations, but always around teaching and learning, and that was the one thing I really appreciated about her. And so I know that from listening to the board and the community that she's definitely going to be greatly missed. And so I really appreciate the opportunity that I had to engage with her over the last eight months. And so, secondly, I appreciate the Cabinet, I know that they're, and the team, Karen and Katrin and everyone else here, I know the team is working hard, and they spend a lot of time trying to focus on how do we improve the quality of instruction for kids. And I really appreciate that, I know it's challenging at times, and it has been challenging, we won't even go there, very challenging at times, but I do appreciate them staying focused on, trying to continue to make, you know, make decisions that's good for kids and do what's good for kids. So I won't prolong it, I appreciate it, and thank you, and I turn it back over to you, Dr. Wyatt.
Alright, thank you, Dr. Irvin, we're moving on to action items, and we've got a few of them here, so I'm gonna try to make them brief and quick. 10.1, Approval Personnel Report, number 12, dated January 18, 2021, which contains actions such as hiring, retirements, resignations, promotions, and terminations. As presented?
I'm moved.
Okay. It's been moved and properly seconded, any discussion? Let's vote. Alrighty, motion carries, we'll move on to 10.3, Establishment of Subfunds.
What about Police?
We, yeah, we did it earlier. So moved?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded, any discussion? Alright, let's vote. Alright, motion carries, Dr. Flores, did you? Oh, you did not get a chance to vote?
I didn't get it.
I think it went through, didn't it?
I thought it did.
Did I get, did I vote? Oh.
Yeah. Alrighty, so I believe 10, 10.4? Alrighty, 10.4, Ratification of Signature Authority?
Moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded, discussion, Dr. Flores?
Yes, I just have a question. Is Judith when a new budget officer, or is she one of our current budget officers?
She is a new budget officer replacing Sally Cabral, who just retired.
Did we appoint her, or did we approve her?
It would have been, it would have been through the personnel.
Personnel Commission, processes.
Classified.
She's a current district employee who was promoted.
Oh, you're promoting her?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Personal report.
But he said he, she was new.
No, she's been in the district.
Due to the role, but she's a district employee.
I just wondered, okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Alrighty, any other further discussion or questions? Okay, let's vote. Alright, motion carries, 10.5, Consideration and Approval of the Amendment to Employment Contract, Assistant Superintendent Educational Services?
I'm moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded, discussion, Ms. Rosas, Medina?
Yeah, I just want to understand, what are we actually, because it says consideration and approval of the amendment to employment contract, so what is it doing? Is it extending the contract with them? I'm not sure, what is it doing?
The provisions of the contract provide for us to bring it to the board to extend another year, and it's a simple extension, there are no changes in the contract, there are no changes in anything extending one year.
Okay, and this goes for all the other ones that are coming up as well?
Right, yeah, all the one, other ones coming up, correct.
Okay, just making sure, thank you.
Oh, Dr. Flores?
So I remember we had a discussion, after so many months or years, the pay would be commensurate, so is that included in this contract?
The pay for the assistant superintendents, I think there was one in particular, Ed Services coming up to be in line with the others. I believe that has taken place, I would have to check with payroll, but it was on line to happen.
That's included in this, in this?
Same rate of pay, we were on either Step 1, Step 2, but everyone should be on Step 2.
So it would be, okay.
Yeah, we're not changing any, anything there.
Well, I didn't understand what you said then.
We're not changing.
I didn't understand.
We're not changing anything or making adjustments, so what you're speaking of in terms of Step 1, Step 2, that stays the same. No assistant superintendent here, we all are on Step 1 or 2.
We're all on the same step.
Uh huh.
Oh, okay, alright, that's all I wanted to know, thank you.
Alrighty, any other questions, concerns? Let's go ahead and vote. Alright, motion carries. Next one, 10.6, Consideration and Approval of the Amendment to Employment Contract, Assistant Superintendent Human Resources?
Moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded, any discussion? Alright, let's vote.
Okay, motion carries, let's move on to 10.7, consideration and approval of the amendment to employment contract, Assistant Superintendent Student Services.
Moved.
It's been moved and properly seconded, any discussion? Okay, let's vote. Okay, motion carries, we'll move on to 10.8, consideration and approval of the amendment to employment contract, Chief Communications and Community Engagement Officer, Community Engagement.
Moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded, any discussion? All right, let's vote. All right, motion carries, 10.9, public disclosure of proposed CSEA bargaining agreement.
Moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded, any discussion? All right, let's vote. All right, motion carries, home stretch folks, consent items, 11.0, do we have any items to be pulled?
Moved, you have to move.
I'm sorry.
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and properly seconded, now are there any items to be pulled? And I say Ms. Rosas Medina, then Dr. Flores?
11.3, 11.4 and 11.29.
11.3, 11.4, 11.29, correct?
Mine was 11.29 as well.
11.29, okay. Any others? All right, let's go ahead and vote with those items being pulled. All right, the rest of the items have been approved, let's go ahead and go to 11.3, ratification of the agreement with In-N-Out Burger, which quite honestly sounds fantastic right about now.
It does and the reason why I pulled it wasn't necessarily because of that, because that would be wonderful, but my thing was January the 12th, and I'm saying this only because I know this was during or probably while, I mean, either the peak or so forth of the, of the increases of the new variant in cases of people getting sick. So I'm just wondering, did they have this event on January the 12th?
Yes, we did hold this event, it was held outdoors and people were given a broad span of time from which to come and get their lunches, so it was not a crowded venue, but there was a steady stream of people who came through, of our employees who came through in order to be appreciated that afternoon.
But wasn't, because I know that when I read the, what was it in language of the In-N-Out, I'm trying to see, it was a way for employees to kind of see each other, it's been a while since they haven't, and the way it was framed, I just wanted to make sure, although I know In-N-Out is outside because they have their big old trucks, that we were just taking precautions and I'm hoping that moving forward, that we are continuing to take precautions because I know it was outside, but still making sure that it's not where people are close together, so, okay, so moved.
Okay.
Been moved and properly seconded, any further discussion? All right, let's vote.
I seconded it.
Oh, okay, thank you, thank you, Karen. Looks like it did carry though. No?
It was actually Ms. Medina that motioned it and I seconded it.
Are we good, Ms. Cunningham? Okay, now it's coming through, sorry. Okay, motion carries on 11.3, we'll move on to 11.4, agreement with Edie Bailey LLP?
Yes, they were here earlier, but I'm just curious with this position because I know they're going to be helping with transition, personnel transition. Can you better explain what their role will be and are they currently in the district? And if they are currently in the district, how are they selecting the people that will be helping with this?
Oh, great questions. So they are not currently in the district in Dix capacity, they are in this district as an auditing capacity. And so as we replace two of our higher level positions in fiscal services, this will assist in the transition to help in terms of the non-audit, so that there's not a conflict of interest. They can't help with any audit related to work, so it's going to be the not, the non-audit budget and fiscal items as outlined in the staff analysis.
And we'll, because I guess just making sure they, when they're helping with this transition, are they, is this what, would we help replace or transition with, like for instance, an example Janet King, is that what it's for?
That is correct, Janet King and the budget officer position that was newly hired as well.
Okay, and then, so they would help with the transition piece, but I'm wondering, do they have the experience? And I, and I see that, you know, the gentleman that spoke, you could tell he knows what he's doing, but the person that they're bringing in the district, where the, where not necessarily the staff will help educate them, it's more about just maybe there's a certain thing on the computer, but they should be able to know how to do everything.
Understood, yes, and so Carolyn Larson is the actual person that would be providing the services and Carol, Carolyn Larson provides services across the county in this capacity to many districts.
Okay.
Moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and properly seconded, any other discussion or questions? Okay, let's vote. Okay, motion carries, moving on to 11.29, agreement with Invigorate Education.
So the reason why I pulled this one, because I was looking at, so in each of these items during the consent items, I look at the attachments, which includes their agreement or the contract information, and I kind of am using this as an example. The other ones weren't, I mean, I had two more items to pull, but there were more smaller ones, I thought, you know, it's not going to, not that big of a deal, but in this case it's a little bit more, which is 95,000. In their, in their agreement, and I wanted to find out with regards to all agreements, it specifically mentions district shall owe any fees contemplated hereunder but not performed, which basically, does this mean that, it's in the contract, it's in that attachment, does that mean that we, if for instance, they don't service all of our teachers or don't service, do we get a refund? Because they're asking everything upfront. So I'm wondering, do, let's just say that they don't service, is that a custom to where they get to reimburse us for services not rendered?
So, I can respond, so if we look at the language, the language says the district shall not owe any fee for services contemplated hereunder in this contract but not performed. So if the services are not performed, we are not, we do not owe them money.
Well, then we don't pay them until after it's, it's completed.
Um, no, so this is, this is two payments, so, so the district will provide two payments after the completion of each set of training dates.
Okay, but, so that doesn't really necessarily reflect that, let's just say that they don't at the end of the, the second one and they don't service the amount of, the amount of staff that they were contracted to, do typically contracts reimburse, I mean, do they give us back some money?
So if, if in the language as it's stated here that we are not, they are not owed for services not performed, then if we did pay them for services, then we, we would have the right to recoup those funds.
And do we typically do that? Is that, is that, the reason why I'm asking is because this is some, I've seen this before in some other type of contracts, right, where they want half of, half of the amount in the beginning and the second amount, you know, similar, but I just want to make sure that since we're holding other organizations also contracts accountable, I don't want there to be favoritism with certain ones and yet other ones know, and this is one of them. So.
So in response to your question, have we done chargebacks in other contracts? Yes, we have. We've done that with quite a few of our CAPS contracts and so that is our standard operating procedure this year. If people are not providing a service, we're not paying for that service and since this is also under student services, our directors know that that's the process in which we're following. If people don't, you know, as they turn in any paperwork, we're cross referencing it to make sure that we're getting, we're paying for what we said we're going to get, you know, what we're, what we're getting, basically, so yes.
Yes, more or less, it's just because, you know, there's some, I think there was conversations beforehand where, well, we're not going to pay until they, they finish, but in this case, we're going to, we're paying in advance and then, is that my understanding? Or, because I noticed it.
It actually says to be invoiced in two payments in the amount of $47,700 after completion of each set of training dates.
And then they get paid after the fact, okay.
We're monitoring that, that's why.
I was just curious to see it, because I mean, I wouldn't necessarily mind that they receive the payment, I'm just making sure that at the end of, let's just say, the first payment or second payment, if they didn't service a certain amount of individuals that they said that they would, then then they would kind of like give us the money back.
So I did, I had a question, it said, because it's confusing, it says total, total cost of, total cost for services not to exceed $95,000 at a cost of $795 per teacher, payment to be made in two payments of $47,000. So when the part says total cost for services not to exceed $95,000, sometimes that means that's the most you can pay and then it tells you how much per teacher, but the question becomes, because the part is confusing, they're saying two payments, because wouldn't you just have to look at the number of teachers who took the class and multiply that by the 795 and it may not be $47,000?
Correct, we're only going to pay for what we get. So if they only train 10 teachers, then we're only paying for 10 teachers.
That's why I was wondering, wouldn't you change the language where it says payment to be made in two payments? That's fine, but you couldn't list the amount.
Right, I understand what you're saying, so it should say what, divided into two payments, maybe not even put the amount because it would be contingent upon the initial fee.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
And I tell you why it's important for me, because as Ms. Medina said, we wouldn't approve this if they're going to train two teachers for $95,000. So it, it has to be on them to make sure they recruit the teachers to take the training and then we pay for that, but I wouldn't want to be approving a training and no one shows up and they get the money just because they got this agreement. So thank you for bringing it forward, Ms. Medina. So maybe we can change the language, just to say, amend it to say payment to be made in two payments and just in it, dare not put that amount. Thank you.
Gentlemen, Dr. Flores?
I would add for services rendered, you know, per, I guess, teacher or, I don't know if you want to be that specific, but anyway, but that was a good point. I pulled it for a different reason and, and it's based on a research study on the Orton-Gillingham reading intervention and it was published in 2021 and the, in the title of this, current state of evidence examining the effects of Orton-Gillingham reading interventions for students with or at risk for word level reading disabilities. And I noticed that this particular contract is for our dyslexic and our ADHD students, which of course they do need, they do need the intervention and, but I, I want to just, you know, say to the board that I want to read just a little bit of this and then I want to, I, last time, this particular organization or business also got a $250,000 contract to teach our kids digitally or in person, so now they want to teach our teachers how to do this. So, but I just want to caution us and I have, and I remember Mr. Tillman asking me, do you have an alternative? I did my research and I found an incredible alternative and I just want to suggest, but I want to read what the abstract says really quickly. Over the past decade, parent advocacy groups led a grassroots movement resulting in most states adopting dyslexic specific legislation with many states mandating the use of the Orton-Gillingham approach to reading instruction. Orton-Gillingham is a direct explicit multisensory structured sequential diagnostic and prescriptive approach to reading for student, for students within, at risk for word level reading disabilities. Evidence from a prior synthesis and what Works Clearing House reports yielded findings lacking support for the effectiveness of Orton-Gillingham interventions. We conducted a meta-analysis to examine the effects of the Orton-Gillingham reading interventions on the reading outcomes of students with, with or at risk for word level reading disabilities. Findings suggest that Orton-Gillingham reading interventions do not statistically significantly improve foundational skill outcomes such as phonological awareness, phonics, fluency, spelling, et cetera. So we did pass the other one and it's just to raise a caution and, you know, we did support them and I, I would like to have evidence of the effectiveness of this approach when we're done, but I also want to recommend, Dr. Rodriguez, this other approach, that you go ahead and, and research it and it's called, just let me find it, the Benchmark Approach. They've been doing it for 10 years and the Benchmark Approach is a unique way of teaching children with dyslexia, executive, executive functioning issues, ADHD, ADD, auditory and visual processing differences and other language-based learning differences. Developed and refined over decades of research and hands-on experience, the Benchmark Approach teaches children how to be critical analytical thinkers with excellent emotional, social and decision-making skills. So I would like you to explore that as well. I am going to vote no on this, but I, I think our kids deserve the best and I would like, and I think they do do professional development as well. And what I like about the Benchmark Approach, I, by the way, I asked two national leaders and special ed and researchers and this is what they recommended. One is, they're both retired professorate from USC, Dr. Vreth and Dr. Nadine Reese from Sac State and so those are my comments, so thank you. And I'll send it to you, Dr. Rodriguez.
Okay, I have a clarifying question, is the Benchmark Approach, as I was listening to you, I, I put it in just to do a Google search, is that the Benchmark School Approach? So we're talking about the school that's in Pennsylvania?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, you have it already?
Yes.
Okay, I'll send it to you anyway, yeah.
All right, thank you.
That was really good. There's more to it, but I, I, they've had a lot of success and like I said, it just doesn't focus on foundational skills, it focuses on critical thinking, you know, and it focuses on their social, emotional and decision-making skills, so.
Definitely, I'll look at it, just at first glance, it looks like it's an independent school for K, or one through A for students with dyslexia, ADHD, ADD, auditory processing and other.
Yes. Yes.
-learning disabilities.
Yes.
So I'm wondering if it's like a non-public school, but I'll research it. Thank you for your suggestion.
Thank you. And, and I just wanted to clarify, because I did, as I was, since I had the contract in front of me, it does say there, scope of work, that they would provide 120 district special education resource teachers on the Orton-Gillingham reading and intervention services, so that's what you were saying, that is not as effective, right? From my understanding, okay. Thank you.
Sabios.
I just want to ask, Dr. Rodriguez, did the team look into what the research says in regards to this particular program that you're bringing before the board?
Yes, so Dr. Lundey and her team have researched this particular program. I also read the article that Dr. Flores sent over to us, I believe it was about a month ago, and so I did look up at some other studies, and yes, this does have, there are some concerns about its effectiveness on its own, but there's also some studies around it complementing other programs that are in existence, and so the move for this is to offer an alternative for students who are having issues with dyslexia. This is not a one-size-fits-all for all students before a very specialized population, but I will definitely research Mrs., or Dr. Flores's suggestion around Benchmark School.
Thank you, Ms. Sabios, Mr. Tillman.
I just want to also say, when Ms. Lundey was here, and you posed a question, she gave justification why she wanted to move forward with this, and I, I think if we purchased it already, it probably would be a good idea to provide the training to the teachers who are going to implement it, so I just was encouraged us to move forward with it, and I, with, at the same time, I heard you saying you're going to look into the other option that Dr. Flores brought up, but I remember this very well, when it came up the last time, you brought it up to Ms. Lundey. She did give justification, and that's why the board approved it, so I think we should move forward with providing the training so they can use what we approved already. Thank you.
All righty, thank you. You had a motion? Okay, my, well, let's go ahead and vote then.
So moved.
Second.
Well, it should have been before we talked about it. So moved.
Seconded by Ms. Sabios. Thank you. That's, no other further discussion? Mr. Tillman, you're done?
Mr. President, we're voting with the amendments, correct?
What was the amendment?
As amended, what, where they were at the 47.
Yeah, get rid of the 47. amended where they would remove the, the 47, right.
I'm still waiting for Dr. Flores and Ms. Sabios.
All right, looks like it is five BA, one NA, so motion carries. Let's move on to 12.1, staff will review items, updates requested. I believe that is Ginger.
Yes, it is. Thank you, Dr. Wyatt. I have several this evening to go over with you, so first, during the parent presentation, the parent group presentations, Dr. Gwen Rogers asked that we provide the dates for the district advisory council, then Ms. Abigail Rosales Medina asked for a copy of the district African-American Advisory Council goals, and related to that later, there was a request that we provide access from Dr. Flores to all of the presentations from the parent advisories. Ms. Abigail Rosales Medina also asked questions about how we were holding people accountable for the African-American student achievement, and I believe Ms. Applegate answered that question. Ms. Abigail Rosales Medina asked for an update on the ways that we communicate with families and to consider alternatives that were suggested. I want to thank her and thank our D-LAC parents for providing some suggestions this evening. We will certainly look into those. And then, Dr. Gwen Rogers, Dr. Flores, Ms. Abigail Rosales Medina, all requested that we ensure that Spanish translation is provided for board members and also for the viewing public. I know there was also some lengthy conversation about board members being able to use Spanish as well. Mr. Danny Tillman asked that we would consider an advisory council for the parents of foster Ms. Abigail Rosales Medina asked that we would look into the issues at middle, college, high school related to enrollment standards and notification procedures. Dr. Gwen Rogers asked, oh, that was also echoed by Dr. Flores, Dr. Rogers, and Ms. Sabios. Dr. Gwen Rogers, also echoed by Dr. Flores, asked that we would agendize or provide a forum for receiving input from community organizations around wellness centers. Dr. Flores, then also supported by Dr. Wyatt and Dr. Rogers, asked that we would agendize a discussion about the contract audit and contracting expectations from the board. Then Ms. Abigail Rosales Medina asked that we would show the COVID cases in the community from January 2nd through today in order to show the impact of the surge that we're currently experiencing. Ms. Abigail Rosales Medina also then asked if we had an appeal process for students who, I mean, sorry, for staff who believe that they, that contract tracing failed to recognize an in-district exposure. Ms. Abigail Rosales Medina also then supported by Dr. Flores, Dr. Rogers, and Mr. Tillman, offered or extended support and wanted to encourage us to look into or negotiate the COVID leave retroactive to October 1st. Ms. Myra Sabios then asked that we would provide information about what we will need to cut from the budget in order to support that retroactive leave before it was finalized or approved. Ms. Myra Sabios asked that we would consider ways to take busy work away from teachers. Dr. Scott Wyatt asked that we would reach out to the city to schedule a bridge committee meeting. Dr. Barbara Flores asked that we would provide evidence on the efficacy of the Orton-Gillingham program here in SBCUSD, and then Dr. Flores also encouraged us to look or research the Benchmark School approach as an alternative. Those were the items I captured.
Did you get the, the symptoms, and then putting it in a flyer form?
And I apologize for not catching that. I could have responded, we actually already have that, so we, it's in the roadmap for reopening that we have, there's actually a checklist that includes all of those specific symptoms.
And that is a good thing, but I, I echoed what they kind of, the concern was, like something tangible.
Yes.
And I can see it myself personally, if they had it, probably on their refrigerator, kids learn it, so that's a, to, to pull that out if possible.
We can absolutely pull that out and create a flyer from it, yes. Thank you, I'll add that.
All righty, Ms. Sontavellus. I'm hoping that's, everything's captured correctly. I don't see any more questions or discussions, so we will hopefully have somebody move to adjourn.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for staying with us through the morning. Have a good day.